Stopping video is a good feature. All right. Now, I'm not hearing myself. Okay, welcome everyone. I call the October 21st, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting are discussions of the draft bike plan and Canyon Park Subarea Plan Update, specifically the development regulations. The discussions on Canyon Park will be continued until November 4th with either action at that meeting or at the November 18th meeting if additional time is required. After the condition, commission action, the plan will be considered by the council with additional public hearing at that time. Before we move on to the agenda items, I would like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Under Governor Inslee's proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, this meeting will be held remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and orally. The Imagine Bothell Notice, the city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff or provide written comments by 3:00 PM today. A video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advanced notice are able to make comments under the audience comment portion of the meeting. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. And with that, I see Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Kurd, Commissioner Alderks, Commissioner Gustafson, Commissioner Vliet, and absent and at this point not excused is Commissioner Piestrop. We also have in attendance Senior Planner Dave Boyd from Community Development and from Public Works, Steve Marikawa and Sherman Gong. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at the specific breaks in the presentation, I will be calling on commissioners who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up your yellow cards. We've all come accustomed to this at this point in the lower portion of the screen, and I will call on you as I see them. This will help avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. So with that, onto our agenda. The first agenda item is public comment. In meeting, in keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Compliment Proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted public visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. Director Cotterman, please let us know if there are any comments received.
I did not receive any written comments that were directed to the Commissioner, Mr. Chair. And I would also like to note for the record that Commissioner Piestrop has joined the meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Piestrop. Are there any calls? No problem. Director Cotterman, do we have any call-ins wishing to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two people who had requested to speak this evening during public comment. And the first speaker is Cameron Chapman. Mr. Chapman, can you unmute your mic? They've changed web back, so I can no longer unmute people for whatever reason.
You've lost control.
Yes, they didn't trust me with control of the microphones, I guess. Mr. Chapman, if you can hear me, could you please unmute? There you are. Can you, can you hear me, Mr. Chapman?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have, you have three minutes now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Cameron and I'm a lifelong resident of this city, but this is the first time calling into a planning commission meeting. Over the summer, I've been striving to learn about the history of planning, land use and zoning and how it relates to the perpetuation of racism in our country and, and our surroundings. For instance, just back in August, I attended a sit-down-and-listen event in Kirkland wherein BIPOC neighbors voiced their concerns about gentrification in their community and in our community. My question, what is the planning commission doing to make sure your work here is not perpetuating the past? Especially as you wrap up the Canyon Park Plan and prepare to update the Bothell Comprehensive Plan. And as a rap, as a follow-up, could you please specify to the citizens of Bothell what support from the city you will need to work on these goals in the planning commission? Thank you. Black Lives Matter. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Thank you for your comments. We have had a number of discussions about diversity and making sure that our plans are inclusive. And in fact, in the Canyon Park Plan, we have requested, and correct me if I'm wrong, or please elaborate on this, Director Cotterman, but we are asking students from the University of Washington Bothell to take a look at the plan through an equity lens and give feedback on that. So it certainly is an item which has been subject of discussion during these meetings. I know we have a couple of commissioners who are also particularly interested in these matters. And if any of you would like to comment, I'd welcome you to come in and address the issues Mr. Chapman has raised. Not seeing anyone jumping in. Okay. Commissioner Alderks.
Hi, Commissioner Alderks here, Jenny Alderks. And thank you, thank you, Cameron, for, for your call tonight and, and for, for asking those questions. And, and thank you for your, your concern and your willingness to learn and understand. My thoughts on this matter, kind of what they relate back to the city council conversation that was had last night about diversity, equity, and inclusion and how that is a priority and goal of the city council for the coming years. And there was a lot of talk about in that plan and in that initiative, how it would need to be implemented with a staff person, either part-time or full-time, who would be tasked with looking at policies and proposals to make sure that they are addressing, that they're addressing equity and inclusion in Bothell. And so I would think that to, to Cameron's question is that this, that the DEI staff position would relate to the work that we're doing here in the planning commission. And so one thing that we could do, since we already know it's being discussed at the council level, is to, to, you know, continue to encourage the city council to hire a position, hire somebody to fulfill that position and, you know, support all of the boards and commissions and all of the departments of the city in median equity goals.
Thank you, Commissioner Alderks. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chair. This is Commissioner Amanda Olson. And I, I like what Commissioner Alderks said. I wanted to add too, we're going to be reviewing, I believe, duplexes and triflexes in November. And I think Mr. Chapman's comment was a good reminder to all commissioners to look into the history of single-family zoning, what it's been used to do, what it's been used, who it's been used to exclude in cities as we look at sort of opening up our zoning a little bit and making things more inclusive. I think it's good to refresh ourselves on that history. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Any other commissioner up? Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you very much to Cameron Chapman for making that public comment and also to Commissioner Alderks and Olson for presenting different perspectives on how this is related. I in fact would like to make a formal motion right now in response to these questions and the questions that we're hearing from the community on the actions of the planning commission. And I move that the planning commission present a formal statement to city council to recommend the hire of a diversity, equity, and inclusion staff person in the 2020 to 2021 budget cycle. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kurd.
Thanks. This is Commissioner Kurd. I second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that the commission adopt a motion encouraging.
Yes, sorry to interrupt. This is something that's probably more appropriate under new business.
Yeah, that, that was my thought as well, but since it got rolling. So let's, let's put a hold on that. We have new business right after the approval of the minutes and let's address this then. We'll encourage the motion to be reintroduced and then have the discussion as appropriate and move forward at that time. So thank you for the motion. We'll, we'll move it down the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, for bringing that matter to this meeting. And as you've heard, there has been some, some productive discussion around that. And with that, I think we'll move. Is there any additional public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is one other speaker this evening. It's Ian Morrison, who's here, I believe, speaking on behalf of Juno Therapeutics. Mr. Morrison, could you unmute your, your microphone?
Thank you, Director Cotterman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Director Cotterman, and, and good evening commissioners. For the record, I am Ian Morrison. I'm a Malange's attorney with McCullough Hill Leary here on behalf of Juno Therapeutics. And you have heard from Juno, Mr. Travis Lynn, and myself over the course of the last couple of months in regard to Juno's planned campus expansion in the Canyon Park Subarea. And as you heard at the last planning commission with Mr. Lynn, you know, the, the Juno campus is thriving and the research and work that they are doing on healthcare innovations is critically important, not only for the city of Bothell, but really Juno believes that it's important for the region and global healthcare innovation. And you're also hearing that, you also heard that Juno is at the guild with its current campus and so has worked for months to plan an approximately 65,000 square foot campus expansion that will ensure that there is sufficient office capacity for the current workers that are there and also to make sure that they can retain and recruit the next generation of healthcare researchers and workers to continue their work on cutting edge, cutting-edge healthcare innovations. And as you know, one of the things with the Canyon Park Subarea Plan is the adoption of many new development regulations is it takes a long time to plan and prepare for a new building. And we have been working well with the city of Bothell under the current code, including a pre-application process to get ready to submit an application under the current code in, in September. And with the Canyon Park Subarea regulations, there are a significant amount of new changes that are changes, many of them positive, but they add uncertainty what, to what is being currently planned for the expansion of the Juno campus. And Juno would like to get under construction, get permits in 2021 and hopefully be complete with construction in 2022. I apologize you hear my dog barking at the Amazon guy in the background. And so that is the reason that we've been talking about adding vesting provisions to the code for a certain limited subset of projects like Juno that have already expended a lot of time and effort planning under the current code, but may not be ready to submit their land use applications by a potential December adoption by city council. You've heard from Travis and myself, we've had great conversations with Director Cotterman, proposed language that would provide for a very limited exception that would allow for certainty for Juno to proceed under the current code and add jobs and have the ability to stay on track for getting permits in 2021 and hopefully construction completion in 2022. Absent this language, we appreciate Director Cotterman's work to date. There is some language in the agenda on pages 11 and 13 that talk about one of the major issues, which is the minimum FAR. Let us be very clear, Juno wants to add job density, but given the fact that there is already existing assets on their buildings on the property, we may not, this new addition of 65,000 square feet might not achieve the zero, the minimum point five FAR. But there are other regulations. And so on page 13, there's a conversation in your agenda package about adding vesting language. We would strongly encourage the planning commission to specifically add vesting language to the package to provide for limited vesting exemptions. We've provided some draft language in our prior letter and we'd ask that you support that going forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any, are there any further comments?
Those were all the speakers we had signed up this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you then. So we will move forward on the agenda to the approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the October 7th meeting. I'd like to thank Vice Chair Kurd for conducting that meeting in my absence. I did watch it later on video, so thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Olson.
I move to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
All right, thank you. Just as a side note, Commissioner Alderks, I cannot see you. There appears to be a bandwidth issue, so if you wish to speak, it might be a little challenge. We'll try to recognize you. Oh, there you are. So is there a second for that motion? Commissioner Kurd.
I second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to adopt the minutes of the October 7th meeting. Is there any discussion to those minutes? Seeing none, have a vote to approve. All in favor of the approval indicate by raising your hand. I see all except Commissioner Alderks who blacked out again, but absent comment, I'll assume we have unanimous approval. And with that, we can move on to new business. I believe we do have a new business item. We had a commissioner propose a motion and like to reintroduce that motion. And if there's interest, second it and have discussion. So I think Commissioner Alderks, that was your motion? Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson, it was your motion. Okay.
Thank you. Sarah Gustafson here. Shall I repeat it?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. I move that the planning commission present a formal statement to city council to recommend the hire of a diversity, equity, and inclusion staff person in the 2020, 2021 budget cycle. Thank you.
All right, is there a second for that? Commissioner Kurd.
I again second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that the planning commission present a formal statement to the Bothell City Council to add a diversity, and I kind of lost my notes there. Is it diversity inclusion?
To recommend the hire.
Recommend the hire.
Of the diversity, equity, and inclusion staff person in the 2020, 2021 budget cycle. Thank you for getting those words.
So there is a motion on the floor that the planning commission present a formal statement to the Bothell City Council recommending the hire of a diversity, equity, and inclusion staff person in the 2021 city budget. Is there discussion on this matter?
Commissioner Alderks here. I don't know if you can see me yet, so I'm just jumping in.
Please do.
Thank you. And I would, a friendly amendment to the, to the motion to correct the budget year to 2021, 2022.
Okay. Does the, does Commissioner Gustafson, as a proponent of motion, accept that friendly amendment?
Commissioner Gustafson, yes, accepted. Thank you.
Okay, so we have the amended motion on the floor. Is there discussion around this motion?
Mr. Chair, you also need the second.
Oh, second.
Friendly amendment.
Okay, Commissioner Kurd, do you approve the friendly amendment correcting the budget cycle?
I approve.
Okay, so the friendly amendment has been seconded, has been approved by both the proponent and the second. Commissioner Piestrop, I believe you wanted to comment?
Yeah. Michael, what is the state of the city's budget right now? Are they looking at a shortfall going into fiscal year 2021?
Yes, the, the budget as proposed currently has, I believe it's a, it's over $2 million that would come out of the reserves in order to make up a shortfall for the 20, the 21 portion of the 21, 22 budget.
Okay. My, my, my two cents is that I agree with the motion, however, without providing a solution for, for our statement is to not only say that this, you know, we are, are in agreeance in bringing on a position of this nature, but where are we going to cut? Where was it going to come from? I mean, everybody wants this, but what are we going to do to make it happen? You know, the statement's one thing, but giving some alternatives to make that happen, I think, would be more of a bold statement saying, hey, instead of just saying, we want this position, we did our homework, we think we can do this, 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 and this to make it happen. So I think it has to be more than just a statement. It's got to be a statement with some proof to back it up.
Okay, any other commissioners? Commissioner Gustafson first, and then Commissioner Vliet.
And if Commissioner Vliet wishes to speak, since I've already spoken, I will resume after Commissioner Vliet's comments.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Vliet here. This, it, it sounds like a very good opportunity. It just, it's very, like, I think I've been on the commission, I don't know, six years now, seven years. We've only made two formal recommendations. Generally, before we make a recommendation, we have a little bit more information to be able to make the recommendation. I'm not saying that I'm for or against this idea. I think it's a, it's, it sounds like a very good idea. To Commissioner Piestrop's comments, would like to know kind of where, you know, where we're going to be reducing. We're already in a shortfall to be able to hire on somebody at a full-time capacity. I guess, I, I don't even know if this is full-time or if this is part-time. I don't know any specifics about this. So I would not be able to vote in favor of this because I don't have enough, I don't have enough information on it. And so I just wanted to clarify that. I, I would like to, I would like to be able, maybe with part of the motion, say, recommend looking into this because we think this is something that's important. But I think it's really hard to recommend it without knowing more about, you know, if it's going to be a full or part-time, how much it's going to cost. I don't know. It's, those are my comments. Thank you. Thank you for yielding and letting me have.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson, would you like to take your time then? Commissioner Olson, next up.
Yes, I would like to, Commissioner Gustafson here, I would like to respond to both comments. First about how to allocate the funding and second of all, as to the role of the planning commission in making a statement like this. And let's see if I can get to both points. The first point is the analysis of the budget. And now I have not looked into detail at the budget that I usually would because right now is actually my busy season as an accountant. However, my understanding is that community development has been cut significantly this year, budget cycle, even compared to other departments, community development is going to have very deep cuts. I believe it's up to 500,000 compared to prior year. With community development being cut so deeply, there may be a question of allocating the funds to a diversity, equity, and inclusion staff person to help shore up that loss to community development. I would also like to point out that in my, again, limited analysis of the budget, it appears that the police department funding is up 1 million compared to the prior budget cycle. Every single department is having to face a cut. I believe that the police department, especially since they have received public safety levy funds, might be a place to reallocate those funds, especially because we are re-envisioning public safety. That is something a DEI person will help us achieve. And finally, I would like to mention another possible place to reallocate funds from, and this is rather painful to me, but we have to make tough decisions. There are capital improvements in the budget for parks, which over the course of several years are multimillion-dollar investments. I do believe that it may be necessary to delay those multimillion-dollar investments, even though I really, really enjoy the parks because those funds may not have been decided in an equitable way. A DEI staff person might be able to help us better direct those funds until we do that. That payout might not happen so quickly. So I hope that has answered some questions about where the possible funds may come from. I asked the second question of whether it is the role of the planning commission to make a strong recommendation. I believe very strongly that the planning commission can make a recommendation. I will relate my reasons why. However, I think I just want to sit on that budget point now and perhaps let other commissioners speak to the motion as well. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chair. I, I do support this, this motion. I, I think it, it makes sense in the context of all of the conversations that our city is having right now. This was a fairly decent talking point in yesterday's council meeting. We had citizens waiting four and a half hours through a meeting to give comment on this. So it's, it's definitely something people are very passionate about. I think one thing to keep in mind is we, we won't, we can, I don't know that it's our place to make a suggestion where the money comes from. I think Commissioner Gustafson brings up good points about how the police department's funding is increasing while community developments is decreasing. And there seems to be maybe ways that that can be refined as the final budget is developed. I think what I would love to see is a commitment from the city leadership to give the council options that allow for a DEI position, and then the council that we've elected can, you know, make the final decision based on what they would need to cut. I think that's going to be their role and not ours. So I just wanted to remind, share that with everybody. So thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to ask a question after, after I'm out about what is the budget schedule? Can you hear me now? A little garbled. Okay, my question was, what is the current budget schedule? Wondering when, when this is going to happen.
I, I didn't come prepared to talk about the budget this evening, so I'm not sure that I have all of the information. I believe it is, they have to adopt sometime before the end of the year, so it would be December at the latest. And I believe there is another public hearing that will have to occur before that. I'm not positive about that. So I think there will be some hard budget discussion at the November council meetings and then adoption sometime either late November or December.
So if the commission were to want to make a motion for the council, the council would hear before making a budget decision. This is pretty much at the last meeting, and that could happen. Is that correct? The next meeting is.
No, you could make a, you could do something on November 4th because the council doesn't meet again until November 10.
Okay, okay.
Soon as they would be discussing this.
Okay, so just a bit of background, the members will be clearly, this is the meeting, like the next meeting, we'll be doing this.
Is everyone else hearing the?
I was going to say, Chair, you sound like an evil robot in a movie.
Yeah, there's something wrong with your microphone.
All right, I'm going to plug it on and plug again.
And I'm going to mute you in the meantime.
Okay, I just did.
Oh, that's better.
All right, perhaps I hit the, hit it when I was moving my notes.
Okay, okay, yes, now, now we can hear you. You don't sound like the evil robot anymore.
Well, that's a relief. So to recap, if I was unintelligible, given what we believe the council's budget schedule is, either this meeting or the next meeting would be the timing for making a, a motion to council which could impact this budget cycle, just a point of information. So commissioners.
And for this chair, if, if I could, I, I'd just like to make a couple of statements. One. One is, um, I, well, I appreciate the support for the community development department and the cuts that we have experienced. Uh, I do want to point out that, um, many other departments have also had cuts, some more severe than community development. So I just want to make that point. I, I don't want to feel like the, like the martyr here this evening. Uh, and second, the second point is really a question, and that is, the motion is to present a formal statement. So if the commission does do this, then I think there'd be helpful, if the commission's trying to prepare that, what that looks like. Is that a letter? Is that simply this motion forwarded to the council? So just some clarity from that standpoint. And typically what happens when the, when the commission takes an action like this, where you're directing something specifically to the city council, it doesn't come through staff, it comes from the commission. So I just wanted to, to point that out.
Okay, so with that additional information and clarification, further discussion from the commissioners? I guess Commissioner Kur.
Thanks, this is Commissioner Kur. Um, I think that this should come directly from, um, from us on the commission. Um, having it go through staff takes away from some of the impact that we have as appointed members of this board. I also think that it's really relevant to the work that we do, um, regardless of where the funding comes from. That's not really our responsibility to determine. It's our responsibility to listen to the community and, um, engage with the different approaches to planning, long-term and short-term planning, um, that the city staff presents us. And so, um, it, it's directly part of our, um, kind of purview in looking at, um, plans to make sure that we, um, have all the, the information we need to come to a good decision. Um, and having a, an additional staff member, um, regardless of the details of their, um, employment, would be helpful. So I support the motion.
Okay, now, the motion is for a formal statement. Director Cotterman suggested that we either make a motion, which is transmitted to the council, or draft a letter, which would be transmitted to the council. In the previous instance, I'm familiar with, a letter was drafted and a subgroup was put together to, to draft that letter. So that background. Commissioner Piestrop, would you like to speak?
Yeah, when we, when we, uh, wrote a letter to the city council when Bruce was retiring, asking for the city to expedite a hire to, to replace him, I think it was David and I worked, Commissioner Vliet and I worked on a letter, and I wish I presented the city council. Uh, I think Commissioner Kieran, or Chair Kieran, I think that's what we're looking to do, correct? Is, is the, the motion is to create a statement coming from the commission to be put in the form of a letter now to either be sent or read at a city council meeting, correct?
Chair Kieran, you're muted. Still muted.
How about now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Good. Okay. Playing with this. Um, lost my train of thought. So the question was, remains, do we have a motion? And, uh, Director Cotterman, for a motion, does the council get that through the minutes? Or does a commissioner come and read that motion to them versus a letter, which is submitted? Process question.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. I believe that's really up to the commission and how you would like to convey that to the council. But again, that would need to come directly from the commission, not through the staff.
Understood, understood. Staff would not be presenting this. Commissioner Olson.
I would support, um, a subgroup of commissioners working on a statement, and then having a commissioner attend, I guess, the next council meeting, or whenever we would, um, and reading it. I think that it's important that one of us deliver that, you know, during the public comment section or whenever we're invited.
So we do have Open Public Meetings Act, uh, issues, so a subgroup, how many individuals could be in that?
As long as you don't have a quorum, either present or through a serial meeting, so that'd be a maximum of three people that could be involved in drafting something, and then that would need to come back to the full commission.
So we could have three people work together to draft this, bring it back to our next meeting, and it would still be timely to get to the council before, uh, the budget, is what I'm hearing. Are the, my first question is, are the commissioners interested in proceeding in that matter, manner, forming a subgroup to draft a letter? Mr. Gustafson.
Um, my question is, I would be open to that idea. However, I would want the words of the motion to stand as stated. I would want to vote on that motion first and see if that motion can pass before then discussing the particulars of a letter. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Other comments?
Commissioner Alderks here.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. I don't know if you can see me yet, so.
You cut in and out. It seems to be a bandwidth issue.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm getting bandwidth issues for several of the other commissioners too. You guys come and go on my screen. Um, so I, I support, uh, Commissioner Gustafson's suggestion that we, um, that we decide the motion first, and then we decide the, like, the vehicle for that, um, how to communicate that, uh, second. And I would also like to add to the conversation about, um, about proposing solutions. And, and I'm generally a big fan of, of, you know, if I'm, if I'm going to bring up a problem, I like to have a, a possible solution that could be suggested to go along with it. Um, but in this case, I, um, I would agree with Commissioner Olson in that it's not particularly our, our place to be doing that. Um, I think there's been some good suggestions made here tonight. Um, I would also point out that in the, uh, current proposed budget, there's an additional million-dollar increase for funding to the fire department, as well as a million-dollar increase to the police department. And both of those, um, city organizations have received, uh, voter-approved public fundings through the public safety levy. So it's quite a surprise to see that their budgets are also increasing at a time of austerity, um, when they've just been, um, granted, uh, new additional money being raised from taxpayers. So I don't necessarily know if that would be involved, what, if we would add information along those lines um, into our, into our recommendation to council. Um, but I, I do, I've been hoping that the city council would be receiving some, some options as well that they would be able to select from, that they'd be able to look at the various trade-offs, um, between, uh, just opportunities that would be available to include a DEI staff person as opposed to, you know, different cuts in different places or different increases in other places. So, um, that might be something that we can add into, you know, a request for that, into, into whatever form we communicate it. Um, so those are, those are my thoughts, kind of globally on the topic. Um, but I would like to, um, move towards a vote, um, so that we can know if we are even going to be, uh, transmitting some kind of a recommendation to city council. Um, so is that possible that we could, that we could vote on the motion as it stands?
Okay, so we have a motion, the planning commission present a formal statement to the Bothell City Council to recommend adding a diversity, equity, and inclusion staff position to the 2021 budget. It's been moved and seconded, and there's a request that the, uh, commissioners vote on that. So I would pose that we vote on that, and then pending the outcome, discuss how to implement that. Is there general consensus on that approach? Commissioner Gustafson.
I did want to, oh, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Gustafson here. I think the language is still slightly different than what I recommended. I did want to put in the word "hire" because I think that is very clear. So to recommend the hire of a diversity, equity, and inclusion staff person, if there are suggested amendments, I'd like to hear.
Okay. I think I skipped over that in my notes, but my notes do read, "The planning commission present a formal statement to the Bothell City Council to recommend the hire of a diversity, equity, and inclusion staff person in the 2021/22 budget." Okay, Commissioner Olson.
I had heard you say 2021 at first, and I was gonna say 2122, but then you said 2122, so I think we're good.
Yes. Sometimes I can't read my own handwriting, sorry. So the motion is on the floor. I guess I'd call, uh, appropriate at this point to vote. Okay, so we'd have a vote on that. Um, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by, uh, raising your hand. And I'm seeing, uh, in favor, Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Kur, Commissioner Alderks, Commissioner Gustafson, and that I would, and myself, all opposed. Commissioner Piestrop, and, uh, abstentions. Commissioner Vliet abstains, stains. So the motion carries by a vote of five in favor, one opposed, with one abstention. Now, there was, uh, next, the question of how to present that, whether it be via a motion or whether we should form a subgroup which, uh, drafts a letter which would be presented at this next meeting, November 4th, and then transmitted to the council. Uh, is there some, well, I'd like to open the floor for discussion on that matter. Looking to see. Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you, Chair. I can be seen. That's nice.
Yes.
At least briefly. Um, I would, I would lean towards a subgroup with a letter, um, so that we can explain our reasoning, and it can be a little more formal. And that would also provide support to a, whoever, which commissioner is, um, is, I guess, nominated to, to read that to the city council. Um, so with, I, I look forward to hearing what my other fellow commissioners think on, on that.
So we can have up to three commissioners participating in the drafting of this letter. Are there other commissioners interested in participating in that process? Commissioner Gustafson.
Uh, Sarah Gustafson here. I would like to express my support for either the chair or the vice chair being part of this group and being the one to present this. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I knew there was a reason I bring the bylaws with me, uh, to these meetings. There is a section on committees that may apply here if the chair wishes to apply this. It says, "The chair may, from time to time, establish ad hoc committees of the commission to carry out certain specific duties or function as the commission deems advisable." This would seem to fall under that. "The chair of the commission shall appoint the members of each committee not to exceed three members, and shall name the chairman of each committee."
Okay.
Uh, and then it goes on, but that's the basic procedural part of it.
Okay, so we're discussing forming an ad hoc commit, uh, subcommittee to, um, draft a letter to the council. We have Commissioner Alderks interested in participating in that. Uh, do we have another member who would like to participate? Commissioner Kur.
I'm able to participate.
Okay. Commissioner Olson.
I would like to participate, but I would also happily step aside for Commissioner Gustafson if, since it's her motion. Um, but happy to do it if we need a third.
Commissioner Gustafson.
I nominate Commissioner Olson.
Okay, we have three commissioners interested in serving on a subcommittee to draft a letter to the council uh, around the motion which was just passed. Uh, do, do we need an action for that, or is that, okay, so it's within, then the authority of the chair?
Chair, chair may appoint, yes.
Okay, so, uh, with the authority, uh, through the bylaws, as the chair, I will appoint, uh, Commissioners Alderks, Kur, and Olson to form an ad hoc subcommittee to draft that letter and bring it to our next meeting for action. Uh, any further?
You're also supposed, also supposed to designate a chair.
Uh, a chair. Um, I'm gonna designate Commissioner Alderks, since you spoke first and, uh, volunteered first for it. Uh, unless there's an objection.
Thank you, Chair. I consent.
Thank you for, uh, agreeing to that. So, uh, unless there is further discussion on this matter, I'd suggest, we see if there's any additional new business for the commission. And not seeing any, um, we will move on to our, um, so we don't have a public hearing, uh, we'll move on to the study session, which begins with the draft bike plan. Uh, staff ready to present the draft bike plan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce Sherman Gong from the Public Works Department, who's going to be presenting the citywide bike plan, the draft of that this evening. Sherman, Sherman?
Hello, every, hello commissioners. Evening. Um, this is, uh, uh, just a briefing, uh, so not gonna get really into too much detail of the bike plan, but I just wanted to, uh, share it, uh, it on a broad, on a broad base here. Let me just start a share screen here. All right, so Sherman Gong here, city transportation planner. Um, good evening, commissioners. At your request, I am here tonight to provide you, uh, a short briefing about the citywide bike plan, and specifically how it relates to the Canyon Park sub-area plan. Um, the bike plan is still a work in progress, and, uh, though we had conducted initial public outreach with the original plan, we intend to, uh, reshare the revised plan with the public again, uh, before we move ahead with the adoption process. Uh, first, I'd just like to review the purposes of the citywide plan update effort. What we have, uh, currently is in our comprehensive plan that shows just a, a kind of a network of where improvements are desirable for, uh, bike facilities. Um, the update intends to look at that existing plan to, and to update it using, looking and, and use, utilizing current facility standards and concepts that are kind of used nationally now. Um, much more elaborate than just saying where a bike lane should be, for example. Um, it's a guide for prioritizing and implementing our bike network improvements. And it's, uh, also, as funding becomes available, for example, and, um, it will also meet the Peterstown Regional Council Active Transportation Plan and, and our city comprehensive plan objectives. So the work we've conducted to date includes the development of the draft ultimate bike network, if costs were not a consideration. Um, the network would be based on functionality similar to our vehicle roadway system, um, similar to like freeways, arterials, and collectors. And I can, uh, kind of show you examples of that in a minute. Um, we also conducted a level of stress evaluation for our, uh, proposed roadway, uh, proposed bike corridors, which take into account traffic volumes, uh, speeds, travels, vehicle travel speeds, and roadway characteristics. Um, and we've also documented the existing bike facility inventory, that we have existing today. We did conduct two open house, public open house events to collect feedback and the input, to identify existing challenges that, uh, users are currently experiencing today, and to, uh, provide them an opportunity to identify some potential network improvements that they would like to see. And so functionality, what I mean by that is like our freeway, as you can see in the map across here, is, um, a freeway is like 405. Our freeways that we've identified similarly would be, for example, the North Creek Trail, which is our north-south freeway, uh, very safe and very, uh, you know, connected and complete network, a couple of gaps there. Uh, the east-west freeways are like The east-west freeways are like the Sammamish River Trail, for example. And then thinking on the next level below that is what we would consider like our arterials in the roadway system and our arterials, for example, would be like in the center of the city there where hundred, hundred, hundredth Avenue and hundred and fourth Avenue connect to two twenty eighth and and along like the east side on a hundred and twentieth and thirty over here, I mean hundred and twentieth and hundred and eightieth, which connect to provide connections to the freeway system, if you will. Additionally, two twenty eighth would also provide those kinds of connections. At this time, Both Levert Highway is not complete yet. But this ultimately could be also a freeway or spine connector. But for probably a more like a commuter type user as opposed to for the recreational type of user. And then collectors are just, you know, anything smaller road, smaller facility types that could be but just bike lanes or whatnot that connect to those systems and just provides a meaningful network that can, that we would use for for all ages and abilities, hopefully. But the main reason for this briefing tonight, however, is to see how the draft citywide bike plan relates to the Canyon Park Subarea Plan, which kind of the Canyon Park area of our bike plan is shown here. The citywide plan calls for the primary connections to all sides of the subarea plan. And with the North Creek Trail serving as the main freeway through the subarea and two twenty eight and two twentieth here, two fourteenth and SR five twenty four serving as the arterial connections to the North Creek Trail Freeway, for example. The main differences, however, between the subarea plan and our draft citywide plan right now is one, there's a new bike lanes that are proposed along this twenty ninth and twenty six corridor leading from two twenty eighth two twenty eighth street. When we also have the two fourteenth connector here alignment, which I've shown in our draft bikes bicycle plan using basically existing pavement or streets and roads that already connect ninth to five twenty seven. This alignment may be somewhat different depending on if it becomes a trail only or if it also includes vehicles and non-motorized users. The subarea plan also includes the twentieth Avenue extension, which leads from twentieth Avenue here in the Business Park and comes up on the east side of Both Levert Highway to connect to SR five twenty four behind the Fred Meyer Complex here. This, this connection would also provide access to five twenty four to travel to the east. That's not included right now. And a proposed shared use path is also being proposed in the subarea plan, which will run from five twenty seven here, Both Levert Highway, along the north side of two twentieth to twenty sixth Avenue. It'd be a shared use path off of the roadway, whereas our current bicycle plan had not considered that type of facility, just bike lanes along this roadway here and leading up twenty sixth to the upper part of the Business Park, the upper campus of the Business Park here. And at that time when we started this process was considering a connection to the neighborhoods and up to two twelfth here east of the, east of the Business Park and the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center. However, further evaluation and looks like we can't this that this connection here is too steep based on the topography and and would not really allow for a feasible bike connection here. So we are currently looking at rerouting a connection that would utilize thirty fifth Avenue here next to Skyview Junior High and Canyon Creek Elementary School roughly. That would take us down and across over to thirty first Avenue, which would lead down to two twenty eighth street and then accessing the Business Park either through the new bike lanes on twenty ninth or just a little bit further over and into the the North Creek Trail and continuing towards more the westerly portion of the Business Park. So and as well, you know, the, you know, in the future, we have the Wash dot facility here that will continue hopefully to with a connection to two twenty eighth to the south as well. So as you can see, the draft plan is will be updated that we have here, our bike, our bike, our bike network of just for this portion of the city as well as others. It'll be revised and ultimately will incorporate incorporate the subarea recommendations that you and the city council will recommend and ultimately approve. And that's basically all I have for now. And thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Chair, I'm getting some feedback. So Sherman, thanks for the presentation. What were the colors in the key again? Can you describe what color the colors designated? Do they show on the? Thank you.
So yeah, the can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
The, the, the colors indicate like the type of facilities that we are planning based on, again, the level of stress evaluation. The green, for example, the green color showed shared use facilities that are not within the roadway. The red, the, the red, the red corridors were buffered bike lanes. The orange that you saw presently through there was where the, I'm just gonna, is the, is the existing network, so. And then we had a buffered bike lane upgrades where we already have existing bike lanes in the network, but they're going to be, we would like them to be buffered because of, you know, just to make it safer. And then there was final, the final, the blue ones, the blue, the blue links were just bike lanes only. And then finally, we had kind of a orange, not, not the bright orange, but a yellow-orange color, which are shared lane, shared lane facilities, which are like share rows, if you will.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you, Chair. And, and thank you very much for this presentation. I've been looking forward to the bike plan for several weeks, so this is a very welcome presentation tonight. My question is, I missed one of the colors you named on the key for the buffered bike lane upgrades. Was that pink?
Purple.
Okay, thank you.
So like that'd be like on a hundredth Avenue, nineteenth Avenue Southeast, that, that corridor connection right in the middle of the city, for example.
Okay, additional questions or comments? Mr. Curd and then Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Curd. Thanks for the presentation. I seem to harp all the time on the bike plan and asking where it is, so it's good to see some progress. I have a couple of questions since the last time it was brought up a year or so ago. One of the questions that I have is how much do records that the city might keep of bike injuries or deaths inform the level of service that you've identified for some of these pathways?
The number of, the number of accidents are they're not, they're not they're not real, they're not very significant. I'll say that there are few and, you know, in between, but there's not any specific locations that really popped up that had in our, in our initial evaluation of it that shows signif, you know, anything that would be like, for example, like car accidents at two twenty eighth and Both Levert Highway, you know, a very high accident location, for example. Bike accidents are kind of, you know, they're just sort of random, if you will, really. And the level of stress is the not a level of service, it's a level of stress evaluation took into account, really looking at just the travel speeds of cars and posted speed and like ride away with available and, you know, traffic volumes. So, you know, if there were any significant locations that had repeated bike safety concerns, then that would be something that would be, it would be pretty rare and that we would have to just address as, you know, as a, as a specific location. But we're not, we're not quite there yet. So we're taking a look at those, at those items though as well as part of, as we get into the final details and finalizing the finalizing the network in the detail improvements ultimately such as, for example, intersection crossing types and those, those, those types of access points. Those are much more detailed that we're not, we're not at that level yet. We're still trying to identify the network right now and make that reasonable from a cost costing standpoint and for future for further planning, I guess.
Okay, so it sounds like the city's not maintaining records of incidents or collisions, collision data with bike or pedestrian.
There is collision data, but it's, it's just like, it's, it's, it's it's maintained like, like vehicle collision data, you know, you just have to kind of go through if there's a specific right now, I'm not aware of, you know, a specific just bicycle data, accident data.
Okay. Another question I have is that especially in Canyon Park, some of the areas that you've identified in some of these transportation improvements that we've suggested and recommended as part of the plan rely heavily on some of the existing arterial spines. And I've noticed that there is some, there are some gaps in infrastructure, but relying on on like Mulby Road for to, to connect neighborhoods to the Regional Growth Center is that's not really necessarily a great I guess, just putting like a paint down on, on Mulby Road or a road that has like this high stress value that you're talking about. I would, I would consider that to be inadequate to rely on these, these spines completely to connect. I know that it makes a lot of sense economically to already use the infrastructure that we have, but there may be grant opportunities for new pedestrian and bike infrastructure or perhaps like inside the, the Business Park. We've been working with community development to identify areas within the park to split up block size. And so maybe these woo nerf and pedestrian access areas could be identified on, on the bike plan to show that no, we're not just relying on bikers and pedestrians using Both Levert Highway to get around. I mean, there are other opportunities for that, too, that might be safer and more for all ages and abilities, too. So my question for you is about, when you talk about buffered infrastructure, are you talking about putting paint on the ground, just buffers with paint markings for cars or actual concrete? Or physical barriers that are going to protect people that are biking or walking?
Our, our, our plan for buffered bike lanes are basically paint only, yeah. With like a one and a half, one foot to two foot buffer with paint as opposed to physical barriers at this point in time.
So.
Their, their, their paint, buffered paint bicycle, bicycle lanes are pretty, are used presently, you know, in the region and you know, they are without, without the physical barriers, they are, you know, being implemented. And I think it's a, you know, it's a, it's a maybe a incremental step, but to safety, but at this point in time from, from maintenance issues and all you know, with when you introduce physical barriers is a, is a challenge and would need further consideration, I guess.
Okay, well, I hear your points, but I also would push back a little bit because there are cities all across the world with snowplows. And there are cities that are able to maintain safe infrastructure without having these concerns about economics. We don't have to have really pretty bike lanes like they do in Seattle. They, they can be cost effective and quick and pop up, too. It's not something that I think we should take lightly, the safety of people that we're trying to focus on getting out of single occupancy vehicles. We need to really support them. And so whether that's raising the definition of what a buffered bike lane actually is or whether that's reevaluating those levels of stress for all ages and abilities, not just for people that are comfortable with riding on the side of a forty-five mile an hour road with a couple of feet of paint in between them and the cars. I think that we need to take another look at that and maybe come back to that after more consideration on, on those levels of stress. The last comment that I had was about some of the goings on that we've had recently on this commission and in the city in general, which was on equity and inclusion in looking at our, our missions and our goals. And I, I wanted to, I know that you've done a lot of work on this early on, but I would just encourage you. My parting comment is just to encourage you to evaluate how it might look to to approach these bike lanes and these bike and pedestrian infrastructure plans with an equity lens. And whether that's something that community development can support you with or Public Works or public private partnerships like with UW or Cascadia. I would just encourage you to take a look at that and really understand the impacts of where we're putting safe infrastructure for people in our city and how that that will ultimately impact who's able to use the infrastructure and who isn't. So anyway, thank you for the presentation and I hope I've said some things that resonate.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other commissioner comments? Mr. Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair. Sarah Gustafson here. I would like to basically repeat everything that Commissioner Curd said about the public safety and equity considerations. Thank you so much. I would like to add a few things. One thing that I do not see in this diagram is the bike storage. I had, again, we would need to do more. I have, again, we would need to do more research and outreach to figure out if bike storage really is an issue in other cities. It is, it has been an equity issue if people cannot get investment in a bike and know that it will be safe. Then they cannot bike. So that's my first question. Do we have the bike storage facilities out at all outlined in the map?
Bike storage and wayfinding, for example, those are again details that we will include in the plan and mention in the plan. Hopefully to even get to a point where we identify where it's reasonable to incorporate storage requirements, but you know, right now, again, the, this draft network that I just showed you is really to identify the infrastructure, how to get how to get access to the, to the facilities from every neighborhood in the city. You know, we, that's kind of where we're at right now. It's carefully just trying to figure out how to get complete access from everywhere that makes sense and and it potentially can, and, and you know, hopefully it's going to be safe. That's, that's the goal. And right now we're looking, you know, for any, any, any streets that are, you know, excessive speeds that are higher than thirty miles an hour, for example. You know, we're not really looking at putting buffered bike lanes there unless we have ample, ample space, but really those kinds of facilities are more, are more or less just for our arterial network, our arterial system, which is mainly our collective arterials, not, not our minor arterial connections and whatnot. But stored, like I say, storage facilities, you know, storage lockers, you know, that, that, that's definitely something that we want to incorporate in the long run. And I think I know community development already includes that as part of their development codes. To provide for that, you know, in some locations and and yeah, that's in the wayfinding is another example of that. That's not necessarily on this plan right now, but you know, we will consider incorporating before we finalize the plan and ultimately build on it, actually.
Okay. Other commissioner comments?
Thank you Chair and thank you Sherman for explaining that. That's what I thought that it would be in a different part of the plan. I think this is really exciting. I like the fact that we are prioritizing what we need to do. I, I know you got an email from me very long with all the improvements that I'd like to see. I'm wondering if we could maybe talk about two of those, which is the levy section and potential improvements or lack of improvements thereof, and also the turn from the North Creek Trail. I guess that would be right onto two oh eight, which were two big concerns that I had, if this is the correct forum for discussion. Thank you so much.
I can, just a quick response to that, the levy. I think Steve Morikow could answer that better, but I'm pretty sure, but one of our discussions about that, he said that the levy had has some infrastructure, has some structural integrity concerns and widening or putting any additional weight on those levies there in the North Creek Business Park, basically is what we're talking about. Is, 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 is challenging and difficult without, you know, excessive costs or I'm, I'm not exactly sure, you know, I'm not familiar with the, the details about the levies, but that's what I understand for that section. And then for the, the right turn that you're talking about up at the end, the north end of North Creek Trail where the North Creek Trail basically intersects SR five twenty four. I think the, the solution to that is the future twentieth street extension connection, which would provide for access without having to cross Boffel Everett Highway twice. You just, you would just continue north along the east side of five twenty seven with a connection through the twentieth street extension, twentieth avenue extension behind Fred Meyer. And that would get you to that side of the roadway without, without having to cross five twenty seven two times.
So that, oh, sorry.
Does that make sense?
Um, I, thank you. I think I might need some help visualizing it. So if you were to end at the north, at the end or head of the North Creek Trail, depending on which way you would look, you would directly go on to which street first? Uh, would it be?
So, so the North Creek Trail, as you, after you leave the business park or after, after you exit the business park and you cross Boffel Everett Highway and you get on to the west side of Boffel Everett Highway, the North Creek Trail continues up north towards two hundred and eighth or Malby Road, whatever Filbert, so many names up there. And then, and then the trail itself takes a left and goes west.
Okay.
As it goes to the connection with the Snohomish County section of the, of that trail. That's just the North Creek Trail. But what your concern was, if you wanted to come off of the trail and go east after you get to the north, after you come up to the north end of that trail where it connects to Malby Road. My suggestion is that instead of following the North Creek Trail all the way up to there, you wouldn't even, you wouldn't even be going on that section of the North Creek Trail. You would stay, you would stay on the east side of the Boffel Everett Highway and follow a new path through wayfinding, if you will, that would take you north behind Fred Meyer and take you up to Malby Road, in which case you could just continue east on Malby Road ultimately, or you know, if, if Fred Meyer was your destination, then you could just, you know, you would just, you would already be there without having to recross the Boffel Everett Highway at that big intersection.
Thank you so much for that detailed and clear visualization. Very helpful.
Thank you.
So I have a question, Sherman. As a former bicycle slash bus commuter, have you looked at intersections between transit and the bicycle network?
We, there are, there are, I guess, established, established standards for intersection crossings now that are being used and implemented around. And those are, we're going to try to stay with the, the, the proven standard that are, are used now. So that's kind of where we are with that. I mean, again, that's like, that's a, it's a detail that we want to incorporate in the plan saying if we have a crossing of a bike, a bike facility crossing of an intersection or roadway that we follow specific standards, whether it's a mid-block crossing or it's a crossing at an intersection. And a good example of that would be like at the intersection of seventeenth and two twentieth where DOT is incorporating bike, bike lane crossings and, and whatnot to, to traverse, to traverse across two twentieth and get over to five twenty seven.
Okay. Let, let me restate. I don't, I don't think you perhaps understood the question I asked. No, no problem. It was probably me. In my former commute, I would take a portion, I would ride a portion of the way and then put my bike on a bus and take a bus a portion of the way. So have you looked at dare I say intermodal links like that, going from bike to bus and vice versa?
I see, I see. Uh, no, no, we, we haven't. I think, I think looking at the, the, this draft network that we have, you know, I did, but there's some, there's some very tough connections that that, that really is going to be difficult to incorporate a, a bike facility and we did, I did consider like, maybe this is where, you know, we want to get to a transit, a transit route, you know, and, and then and those are even far and few in between, right? So linking to a transit, a transit route is also something that we're considering in this network. And I think that's, that would help in that transition, like you say, you know, between riding a, you know, riding your bike and using transit, collect, you know, coordinating those trips. So you know, it's definitely would be part of, you know, transit is definitely part of, you know, the, the ri- riding experience and the more transit routes we get ultimately, the and the better, the more connections that we would hope to, you know, that would, we have a bicycle facilities that would connect to those.
Thank you. I would suggest that you, you keep that in mind as you do your planning. Because when we look to get people out of the single occupancy vehicles, it's that last mile or so that is a challenge. And if you can get off the bus, get on your bike and have a safe ride the remainder, I think that would be beneficial. So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Commissioner Alderks and then Commissioner Olson.
Thank you Chair, Jenny Alderks here. I'm wondering Sherman, if you could pull up the, the whole, like the, the plan, the slide that has the plan for all of Bothell. I realize that we are looking at the Bothell Bike Plan specifically for our deliberations for Canyon Park. But as a, as a resident of South Bothell, my, one of my major concerns about biking and the Canyon Park subarea plan is that there is a way to get to Canyon Park from, you know, two fortieth or downtown. And so could you pull that up so we could take a look at it and talk about the connections that are that currently exist are being planned and what opportunities there are there for to connect, you know, I feel like we've talked about this before, four oh five and two twenty eight cuts off Bothell from the rest of Bothell. And it can be a challenge to go from one to the other, especially when you're trying to get out of a car. So if you could somehow make that bigger, I'd love to have a conversation about it.
See, let's do. Let's do this. I think that's the best as I'm going to be able to do here. But I think, I'm not sure what your question is, but you're talking about two fortieth here or?
Yeah. Thank you for pulling this up. I'm, I'm looking at specifically connections to Canyon Park from downtown Bothell. So an example is, you know, two fortieth, we're also talking about how do we get people on bikes north through, you know, through two twenty eighth. And so I'm, I'm the previous example that you, that we had spent the most time on had kind of cut off the bottom of Bothell. So thank you for bringing this up. I see, you know, is that a hundred and first, a hundred and fourth and?
Yeah, there's, this is, you know, so from, again, this is a the challenge from the west part of the city is few connections. And what was reasonable is, you know, for this, for this area, people aren't going to ride up this hill, then up Meridian and then back down to get to ninth. And, you know, they could go in this way, which to me would be the safe way. The, the most, most people in the west hill neighborhood, for example, would probably just want to go this way down to Boffel Everett Highway and then, you know, and come into the, and, and then come into the Canyon Park area. Ho- hopefully in the future through the south, south connection in the Wash Dot Ramp here. But, you know, they could continue down two twenty eight to the North Creek Trail, which leads right here. And yes, like you said, a hundred, a hun- a hundred and fifteenth. This is a hundred and fourth that connects over to nineteenth here and connects to, connects to two twenty eight. We have the North Creek Trail here. And this is thirty fifth, which is is an identified project to include bicycle lanes on that with roadway improvements. So those are basically our connections, you know, to get to the north here and yeah, it's, it's, you know, like I said, the, the purpose of this, the, 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 the thought of all this is that we, you know, we look at the North Creek Trail as the main access because it's the safest. And if you can get to the North Creek Trail from any, anywhere, you know, in the city, then you can go north, you can go from the north end of the city all the way to the south end of the city safely. Again, if you're, our barriers is four oh five and this hill, Maywood Hill basically, which doesn't have any, you know, east-west connections. So we're limited there and anybody in this western part of the city has to, will have to ultimately use either Boffel Everett Highway or you know, get to ninth and connect in from, from this road, from, from this road here. And that includes the Queens, Queensborough area and all of this area and the northern, north, the northwest part of the city. You know, the, as far as like trying to get to north, to the freeway in North Creek Trail, you know, some of the downtown could obviously jump on the Smamish River Trail and get to it. And that would be how, that would be how I see people, you know, getting around for most parts of the city. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. And it does. And in, in my experience, my desire to get north of Bothell would actually mean going on to Smamish River and connecting to North Creek. And so, yeah, just thanks, thanks for talking through that. Because what I'm seeing is five twenty seven between two fortieth and two twenty eighth is marked as shared use. And so that would be, that's cars, buses, bike lanes that aren't currently there. Unless there's kind of shoulder, you know, painted on the side of it.
Okay. So again, as I mentioned, this is our ultimate plan if we had no, no funding limitations. So, you know, it may, it may not happen right away and, and everything, but, but this, you know, this section already has bike lanes that were built when we widened this road and made those improvements. So there is a facility here. It's, it's definitely not for like a twelve year old or anything like that, I would say, but you know, it's better than nothing. And it would probably not be a project that, that like, for example, this section where we're, we're designing and working on right now, which would hopefully have a separated path that is not a typical bike lane, you know? Back when this was built, our current, our current bike plan, all it shows is, you know, roadways that we would like to have bike lanes on. And that's how they, that's why they built this instead of considering it as something other than, other than that, bike lanes are, were just, you know, that was the only type of facilities that was basically acceptable and used. So that's what was built. And you know, talking to, talking to residences at, residents and citizens at, at the open houses, you know, honestly, most of them felt that having a bike lane was, 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 was great. And that was more safe, safe than having nothing. So, you know, as we think about what we're going to do with our interim plan, which, which we're also working on and is, is what we can do in terms of, you know, using existing pavement and low, lower costs where we can actually build either a bike lane or even designating it as a share row where people are more aware that there's potential bike riders on this facility and they, you know, it just makes it more safer in general. So you know, just makes it more safer in general. So that's kind of our, our goal right now and. Uh, we'll, we'll, you know, it's uh, the, the bike plan will hopefully, you know, get better and better and improve as we go. And we'll just uh, that, that's our hope anyways.
So this is a draft plan with some more work to be done. I suggest, can't hear me?
Kind of.
No, I'm not touching it. It seems to. There's, there's an issue with this connection that, okay. So this is a draft plan with some more work to be done. Uh, Sherman, thank you for bringing this to us at this meeting. I'm going to suggest we wrap this portion, uh, and then even take a brief break and proceed with the remainder of the subarea plan unless there are objections. Commissioner Alderks?
Thank you Chair. Um, I did see Commissioner Olson's hand up a little bit earlier and um, didn't get a chance to, uh, to give her a, a minute. So I'm wondering if she would like to, like to contribute.
Okay, we're in ribbon format. We're in ribbon format. So I may not have seen you. Commissioner Olson.
I won't take it personally Chair. Um, so.
Sorry.
I um, I think my question is quick. I hope so Sherman, you'll have to keep me honest. Um, I, I, as a pedestrian and a bike rider, I'm a big fan of extruded curbs versus paint. How much more expensive is that um, when you're making improvements for bikes and pedestrians?
Honestly, the quick response to that is, is basically is not the cost of the improvement, the paint versus extruded curb. It's the cost of the maintenance and how you will maintain. You know, between the extruded curb and maybe a sidewalk curb, you know, how do we get behind there? How do we, what resources are we going to use to maintain that? Because a plow or a street, a sweeper, street sweep, you know, uh, can't, can't get back there. And it's a, it's a decision, I think, that we, at this point in time, just decided that. You know, we don't want to create that type of a physical barrier mainly for the maintenance issues. And, you know, costs to maintain those, you know, we don't want leaves and debris behind there that would create an unsafe facility, you know, just because it's separate, but we don't want to have people riding through there because we can't, we don't have the resources to maintain that, you know, and keep it clean. So I think at this point in time, that's kind of the, the thought and, you know, we just want to uh, provide a buffered lane with, you know, a, a paint only to make it just something better than nothing at this time.
Okay, I had, I had an extruded curb kind of show up in my neighborhood recently and I was excited. So I was hoping that was like a new thing for the city, but thank you very much.
Okay.
Any, any closing comments from commissioners before we take a brief break? Seeing none, I have seven thirty seven on my computer here. Uh, we'll go for a ten minute break and reconvene at seven forty seven? All right. Thank you. We're on break.
And that'll just be that. Hold in, hold an additional is what you, okay. All right, we'll do that. So should I ask if they agree or should I say boring objections? We will.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay.
One, one.
Yeah. Currently certain we'll get a consensus, so. I think uh, we could, uh, we could test out these headphones real quick. Yeah, I'm gonna do it without my mask on. Okay. You can hear me fine? All right, good.
Can you say something? Me? Cause I was. Can you hear me?
Okay, we gotta do.
Ah, yeah.
Audio options, speakers, headphones. Okay, it's on. Want to try one more time?
Can I talk? Trying to get me to stop talking. Still not coming through?
Yeah.
Maybe you have them in the wrong ear. You click settings? Now see, I heard you.
Yeah, and I hear you, but it's not coming through here.
It's coming through his speaker instead of us. Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Yeah. Pull in, put the volume.
Yeah. On that. We had it figured out. Now I don't know. Am I still coming through the speaker?
Yes.
Ah, it just doesn't seem to be recognizing that there's headphones plugging in. Yeah, well, it's not, it's not doing that. Think so. It's not recognizing that there's anything coming through.
I bet. What was the problem with the initial ones?
With these? It was this exact same thing. Yeah. Did you try plugging in those other headphones into a different USB port?
No, I did not.
Let's try that.
That looks better.
The other option is, is.
Rather not go there.
I know. The sound is going to come through your speakers. Then you guys have to be in different rooms, otherwise we'll get feedback.
Okay, the device is ready, set up, set up and ready.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Wanna speak again?
Yes, can you hear me now?
No, not through the headphones.
Interesting. Is there a speaker volume? Is it just not?
Well, that was bad. Yeah, I believe.
You heard that? Sorry.
All right, uh, we've done a little more work on audio.
All right, we're back on the air uh, for the October twenty first uh, twenty twenty meeting of the Bothell Planning Commission. We've done a little more work on the audio. Hopefully it'll be continuous through here. Uh, so with that, we will continue our study session on the draft Canyon Park Development Regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna uh, kick this off. There are a couple of things in your packet this evening that we wanted to go over. Uh, there, there's a little bit of overlap between them, but not entirely. The first is in Attachment One. And that is a list of, of some outstanding issues that we've entitled a code decision matrix. So there are really three categories of, of items in here. One is just information. We want to share with you some things that have changed from previous drafts and just make you aware of those. I think they're either um, a little more administrative or they're um, consistent with direction that we've gotten from the commission. We want to make sure that we're, we've captured that adequately. Uh, then we have some areas where there's some new direction uh, based on some comments that have been received or some things that we've noted as we've been working on this. And those may be labeled as recommendations. And then finally, we have some that uh, we're, we're, we don't have a specific recommendation yet, uh, but we're looking for feedback from the commission just to confirm that, that we, we're, we're still going in the right direction on that. Uh, as there is more work to do on the, on the draft code. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Um, I should also mention before I get started that I'll be, uh, other people will be participating in the presentation. Uh, we'll sort of move back and forth between some different items here. So Bob Bangford from Makers Architecture is also here along with Rachel Miller uh, from Makers. And Bob has been working on the code along with Dave Boyd from uh, our community development staff. Uh, who's been working with Mike Stanger at Arch on some of the affordable housing issues. So we're gonna pause there as well. And uh, try to get through all of this tonight. I know we're a little far behind schedule from where we had expected to be at this point. But uh, it's important that we get through this because we would like to get enough direction this evening that we can hopefully come back to you with a, a, a complete draft uh, at the November eighteenth meeting. So uh, and Bob, I'm gonna go through the matrix here real quick. And there's a few places I know we need to stop uh, for you to talk about a little bit more. If however I run right through it, if I run the stop sign, just please, you know, flag me down and, and let me know you need to talk a little bit more on that. So the, the first one I think is uh, really just information. Uh, this is uh, listing the, the uses that are there. I think the main thing we wanted to point out for the commission, because we haven't really talked about this uh, that much, is these new zones that have been created that we've been talking about, that the bulk of the discussion's been about, are really applied within that Regional Growth Center portion of the subarea. I recall that the subarea is larger than the Regional Growth Center. So these zones are the new zones that apply within the Regional Growth Center. Outside of that Regional Growth Center, but still within the Canyon Park SubArea, the zones that are currently there will still apply as they do. So there, we're really not making changes to those in terms of names or in terms of the, the regulations and how they apply. Uh, Bob, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
Nope. I can show a map later, but.
Okay, if we, yeah, if, if there are any questions or if we need to, we can, we can show the map a little bit later. Uh, we are still finalizing the details on the maps. It's amazing how many details there are on maps that, that always need to be fixed. Uh, the other thing that I should mention, we're not showing, but we will be adding a definition of Regional Growth Center to our definition section. Uh, just to define that as it, as it is according to the regional, I'm sorry, Puget Sound Regional Council. Uh, so the next one, this is a, a change that's come about um, a couple of reasons. The first one has to do with the motor vehicle sales overlay or MVSO. It's actually applies in several areas throughout the city. Uh, and it does apply within the Regional Growth Center. Some, to the RAC zones within the Regional Growth Center and some other combination zones that we have. Uh, and I'm just, I'm about to correct myself from something I said earlier that we weren't changing any regulations outside of the Regional Growth Center. Uh, this is the one exception. Now hopefully it's just the one exception to that unless I've forgotten something else. Uh, where we would recommend that the, the MVSO, the Motor where we would recommend that the, the MVSO, the Motor Vehicle Sales Overlay, and it is just an overlay on existing zones, that that be removed from the zones within the Regional Growth Center, and also those zones that are in the remainder of the sub-area. This is something that was put in place several years ago, I think, to encourage motor vehicle sales in different parts of the city. It still exists in other parts of the city, I think in North Creek and downtown. Some limited areas in downtown are along 522. So there are some other opportunities for that to occur. It doesn't really fit with the vision for the Canyon Park sub-area. That's why we're recommending that it be removed from both the Regional Growth Center portion, as well as the rest of it. I should also mention that those properties that are outside of the Regional Growth Center, within the sub-area where this overlay applies, are mostly critical areas anyway, so there really isn't any likelihood that we're gonna see that development occur. So we're looking for concurrence from the, the commission on, basically, the, the recommendation to the council would be that this be removed from those zones. So I will stop this for a second, and see if there are any questions about that.
Commissioner Curd.
Thanks, this is Carsten. I concur, I think that it should be removed, but if I remember correctly, in the definitions for the Motor Vehicle Sales Overlay, it talks about having a requirement of there being two arterials or state routes that intersect. And I'm wondering, that whole definition would need to be changed with this, with this minor modification to the Canyon Park area.
We will take a look at that. Thank you, that's a good point.
Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you, Chair. My question about the Vehicle Sales Overlay is, what is the Canyon Park Business Owners Association position on that? Have they said that they would like to have motor vehicle sales happening in the sub-area?
I don't believe that has come up, and I'm not even sure that their CCNRs allow it.
Okay.
But as far as I can recall, the, that hasn't, that's an issue that they've now raised.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I think we can move on, then?
I'm gonna try to move through this quickly, so I'm not, not trying to run over anybody, but whoops, that's not the one I wanted to share. What is that one? Not sure where that came from.
Uh-oh.
I hit the wrong one somewhere. There we are. Okay. So the second one, this is a request, or a, a note that did come through the comments from the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association. They had a question, suggested that the following uses not be permitted in the employment medium or employment low zones, as being inconsistent with the purpose of those zones, and potentially eroding the employment base. So those were hotel and motel, education services, recreation culture, and, should say, entertainment, and then retail with a gross floor area of between 2,500 and 12,000 square feet. I would note that the gross floor area of less than 2,500 square feet would still be allowed in those areas. So the recommendation here is that, that, that under the recreation, culture, and education, that, I'm sorry, and entertainment, that we retain sports fields, parks, and swimming pools, those are subsets, and education services, because there are already education services within the, the business center, including the, the bus base for the school district, as well as the new high school, Innovation High School, I think it's called, that's in the business center, and those are both in the employment areas. But we would, we would recommend that hotel, motel, and the retail of 2,500 to 12,000 square feet, and then the other recreation, culture, and ed, and entertainment, besides the ones that we've listed, also be removed from those zones.
So the existing hotel, which is up there, is outside of those zones? There are some hotels.
The, yes, there's, there's one on the west side of Boffel Leverage Highway, as I recall.
Yes. Isn't there something on the east side, near McDonald's?
Is there a hotel there? Dave, do you recall?
Commissioner Olson, do you?
Yes, as, as the neighborhood representative, there is a hotel by the McDonald's.
Okay. And that's in the same block with the McDonald's?
Yeah, it's like kind of tucked between the McDonald's and the park and ride.
Okay, yes, I know what, I, yes, all right, I know what you're talking about. That is not in the employment zone.
Okay.
So that would not be affected by this. And those are the areas where we would like, where it would make more sense and be consistent with the plan.
Okay, good. So any other questions on that recommendation, based on the clarification? Gonna scan across. I do not see anyone seeking to comment, so let's proceed.
I'm gonna jump right back into it, then. So this next item has to do with density and dimensional regulations, and this one is really more about the affordable housing. So there's actually a little bit here to go through, and it's, it's an important item, and I want to make sure that we spend a little bit of time on it with the commission. So I'm gonna turn this over to, I think, Dave and Mike Stanger, and maybe Bob, if there's some other parts of this that you want to talk about relative to, to heights as well. So I will stop sharing.
So this is Dave Boyd. Good evening, all. Given the, the lateness of the hour, I'm gonna give a, a real brief, just verbal overview. Mike Stanger has been doing a lot of work on analysis of the development capacity, and the other changes, and the impacts those have on, on being able to justify portable housing requirements, and possibly incentives. The, we're, we do have some recommendations in some of those areas, we're still working on them in other areas. But bottom line is, the, the analysis shows that, on average, throughout much of this sub-area, where we're allowing residential development particularly, there is an increase in capacity over the existing zoning. When you factor in all of the existing conditions for ground-floor retail and structured parking of about one story in most areas, it, it varies a little bit. And then the bigger factor, actually, is the, the reduced parking. And we are suggesting that we adjust the parking that's, that is in the draft code right now to reflect the parking utilization study that we did downtown, which would reduce, particularly reduce the amount required for two- and three-bedroom units. That parking study did point out that, that it's not a linear progression, based on number of bedrooms. Two-bedroom units don't require more than, twice as many cars, three-bedrooms don't require three times as many cars as a one-bedroom unit. So we've got some numbers there that we, we could put up, or we could bring those back at a later date for, for more detailed analysis. But the bottom line is, when we look at both of those combined, we feel that there is justification for a, an affordable housing requirement to provide 10% of the units at an affordability level that, at a cost that's affordable to households at 70% of the area median income. That's comparable to what we've done in the affordable housing overlays downtown. And, and we think that's a good basis. The area that we feel like we need a little more analysis is whether there's room by virtue of the bonus for, that would remove the FAR limit, or possibly some tweaking of the height limits to allow a base at 75 and a bonus to 85, to layer onto that affordable housing requirement, a, an affordable housing incentive that would enable us to, through a more voluntary means, to get to lower income levels and provide a broader mix of affordability, as well as provide some capacity for transferable development rights. So I'm gonna pot, stop at that point, and if the commission would like to see any of that analysis now, we can share it, or we can bring it back to you, provide it to you in advance of, of a future meeting.
Dave, if I could just jump in real quick, so I think, two things. One is, I just wanted to mention that they've talked about incentives. The other incentive that is not coming to you at this time, but will in the future, is the multifamily tax exemption program. That's a citywide program, where we are, will apply most likely in Canyon Park as well. But that's gonna come later on, that's not gonna be part of this package, so I just wanted to remind you of that. Second is, Dave, I think it would be worth sharing the, the parking numbers, just to, to give the commission an example of what we're talking about in terms of parking per u, or per bedroom. Because it is less, I think, than what we've talked about previously with the commission, just to make sure that, that there's consensus, or there's consensus that particular direction.
Okay. And I, I will attempt to do that, and while I'm doing that, if I can manage to talk and click at the same time, I will also acknowledge that, that Mike Stanger is with us tonight, and invite Mike to jump in as, as he feels needed. Now, can you see this?
Yes.
Yes.
And I think Commissioner Olson had her hand up.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to try and put this into perspective in my head, so what is 70% of the area median income? What's the income for that family?
That depends on the household size, and beyond that, I'm gonna defer to Mike, if I might be able to give a better answer.
I'm assuming you mean Mike Stanger.
Mike Stanger, yes.
Yes.
Hi. Hello, Commissioners. It's good to see you again. I can, I will try to answer that really simply, by saying that a 70% of median would for, say, a two-bedroom, I mean, would be able to afford a, I'm sorry, let me try this again. A family of three, at 70% of median, would be able to afford a rent of just under $1,600 a month. A family of four, that would go up to about $1,800 a month. I don't have the income figures in front of me, but I could pull those up if you'd like.
No, that helps, thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions related to that?
Commissioner Alderks here. Sorry, Commissioner Alderks here, I think that I might be off-screen, so I'm jumping in.
Yes, you are.
Thank you. So I'm seeing that this is based in a focus on rent, and I'm wondering, at what point will we be seeing ownership options? So that, that are affordably priced? Is that going to be part of the multifamily tax exemption plan? Or will there be, you know, opportunities to buy affordable housing provided in the sub-area?
That is a, a great question, and at least in downtown, when we established the affordability requirements, we established different affordability levels for ownership housing and rental housing. We have not gotten to that level of detail in, in this analysis yet, or, or recommendations yet. And, and perhaps Mike Stanger, if you have more to add on that question, jump in.
Nothing specific, I had assumed all along that we would also be making provisions for owner-occupied housing, but I'll just leave it, you know, we haven't done any, as Dave said, we hadn't done any specific analysis on that yet.
Commissioner Alderks here again, what would be the timeline on, on doing analysis and study for that?
Um, that, well, we would certainly be, want to be able to address that when we bring this back to you. The one challenge is that, other than the townhomes, most of the housing that we anticipate in, in these new Canyon Park zones will be in the form of apartment-type housing, which can be built as condominiums, and, and that could be affordable ownership housing. But currently, there are, remain some obstacles to building condominiums in Washington State. So there's, there, there is a barrier there, that doesn't mean we don't, shouldn't try to address it, and hope that they, they solve those problems in the future. We really have, have focused on, on, on analyzing and, and trying to figure out what, where we, what the target is, and then with additional refinement, we can see if we need to adjust that target for ownership housing, if we have another affordable housing overlays.
Okay, I see Commissioner Curd, and also Commissioner Gustafson, so Commissioner Curd first.
Thanks, this is Carsten. Thanks, Dave, for the presentation so far, I really like what's being presented. I would assume that income levels from jobs that are in the sub-area are probably not necessarily at 70% AMI. And if we're looking to make people, give people options to live near where they work in, in this economic engine, I would consider lower value, lower percentages of AMI, or looking at deeper levels of affordability wherever possible. I like the idea of these incentives for height bonuses as well, but I, in general, I'm in, I'm in more support of requirements, and something with a lot of teeth, rather than just giving bonuses. And looking at the residential parking minimums, too, I support the low parking study options. That just seems really reasonable, that it doesn't follow a linear trend, so that's my two cents, thanks.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Gustafson.
I thank you very much, Chair, Sarah Gustafson here, yes, similar questions, Commissioner Curd. My question was, if we were to layer the incentive structure on top of the mandatory structure, do you have any idea or projection what kind of units that would produce? And perhaps it makes sense to put the deeper affordability in the incentive structure. I think, as I've said before, it's really important to look at the economic incentives here, and make sure that we are providing as much deep affordability as we can without, at the same time, provide, making it so difficult that no one's gonna provide anything at all. So what are, how can we think about this creatively and realistically?
I'll just jump in real quick, and, and Mike, you can add to this. But basically, the, the way that this works is, the deeper affordability, under a mandatory program, the deeper the affordability, and this probably is true of incentives as well, the fewer units. So there is that trade-off, and I think Mike has done some of that analysis to show, you know, if we went to a certain depth of affordability, say 65 or 60%, what that would mean in terms of, of percentage, so it'd be less than the 10%. And that's, that's just how the economics work in that. And I think it's, it's similar on an incentive, under an incentive program, sometimes the incentives and the Sometimes the incentives and the mandatory can be layered. The MFT can certainly be layered with either an incentive or a mandatory program. So that's another dynamic to this that will come later on. But that, that provides a little bit of background and response. And Mike, is there anything you want to add to that?
I wanted to mention the experience that we've had recently in Redmond, where they had an inclusionary program for many years that was, 10% of the units at 80% of median. They introduced an MFT program only recently, and they have two options. One, the one that gets used almost all the time now is if you accept the tax exemption for eight years, then you have to lower the affordability of those same 10% units from 80% of median to 60% of median. And I foresee us talking about something very similar in Bothell, although, but I haven't run those numbers yet. But I, I'm hopeful, not making any promises, but we could, we could get that affordability down to possibly 50% of median. And although MFT is voluntary, as I said, virtually everybody in Redmond takes it because they're already required to provide 10%, make 10% of the units affordable. And so it's an easy step for them to say, well, as long as I'm doing that, I might as well take the tax exemption and make them more affordable.
And as Director Cotterman mentioned, that's something that we're going to be analyzing citywide and applying after the fact. So this isn't the be-all and end-all in terms of affordable housing measures, but we're trying to get as much as we can reasonably justify. I just want, just quickly, I'll touch on the, explain the parking options here. And as I said, this was based on a Phase 1 parking study done in downtown, and where they, where we analyzed, actually measured parking utilization for three of the early downtown projects, and established that the low range is based on what we observed and taking into account the trend, which is towards fewer cars per household. The median trend was taking into account what we observed, and then adding a tiny, a small amount of extra surplus. And so that was the basis for that. And we've heard one reference there. And then I'll just scroll down a bit. Can you see at the bottom here, the commercial parking minimums? The other area, we haven't done a full analysis yet, is we are also increasing the, or decreasing the parking requirement, and potentially increasing the capacity for a commercial space. And in the, in downtown, in the SR 522 corridor, affordable housing overlay, we came up with a contribution for, for commercial development to affordable housing, either through providing units, mixing some units into their commercial project, or through fees, which would probably be the more likely result. And then those fees could be used ultimately when, when we developed enough of them to get at those lower affordability levels again.
So the feedback we're looking for from the commission this evening is really, just generally, if you're okay with the direction that we're going with this, which is to look at a mandatory affordability, the inclusionary provisions that we've talked about, see if there is a way to do an incentive program on top of that, and at least provide some capacity for a transfer of development rights that would add on to the affordable units as well. And the main way we would get there, or the mandatory, would be through the parking.
And during this discussion, I did see Commissioner Gustafson and Commissioner Olson raise their hands, if you would still like to speak. So Commissioner Gustafson first.
Yes. Sarah Gustafson here. Point of clarification, before, when we had talked about incentives, we had a, basically a batting order of incentives that included affordable commercial space, environmental incentives and so forth. And I'm wondering, have we closed the discussion on that, or is that a different part of the conversation?
That's a good question. What I recall from the discussion was, the affordable housing was toward the top of that list, and then we were looking at, trying to remember what the rest of the order was. But I think what, what we found is, there's not a lot of room to add other things to that, at least at this point, in what we've looked at. So we'll go back to that list and see what else is on there. I know there were some things about solar, for example. There were some things about, you mentioned the commercial space, affordable commercial space. So we'll, we'll take another look at that. But at this point, there doesn't seem to be the capacity to do more than just the affordable housing piece of it.
Yes. Commissioner Gustafson, continue.
Thank you, Chair and Director. Yes, I think personally, from what I've gathered, it seems like we need to focus all of our energy on one top incentive to make it work. Although, at the same time, it, again, it pains me to say that, because I've heard from folks in the community who are looking for affordable commercial space, and who are very interested in green affordable housing, and I feel like, since we put in our plan that we would do some outreach regarding the incentives, I have very mixed feelings about ending the discussion, although I do understand the need to focus around one incentive. How would we, how do the other Commissioners feel about that, for example?
Dave, could you unshare your screen, please?
Oh.
So we can.
And Commissioner Olson, you wanted to comment as well?
Yes, please. Thank you. So, sorry, I totally lost my train of thought, because I was thinking about what Commissioner Gustafson said. So I, I do agree that affordable commercial space seems really important to me as well, but I do agree that if, if we have to pick one, affordable housing should be top. I think that's an urgent need in this community and in our city. And I did want to echo what Commissioner Kurd said about liking the low required parking option, just for the recommendation there. I am curious, if we don't address affordable commercial space in this initial stage, at what point would we get to address it? That's kind of my, my question there.
And I think that could be something that could be worked into the commission's recommendation. Let's say that there isn't any capacity to add that. At this time, that could be part of the commission's recommendation to the council, is that that be looked at. And we already have something in the actions, I believe, as well. So that is part of the implementation program. And there may be some other ways that we can work that in. We haven't given up on it entirely. I'm just saying, from, based on our initial analysis, I'm not sure if there's additional capacity for that.
Okay, Dave, I see you sharing a blank screen on my monitor.
Well, I was just going to ask, was I successful in stopping sharing? But, because it doesn't look that way on my screen.
Unfortunately, no.
Well, you're sharing, you're just not sharing anything, so. Other Commissioner comments, questions? And again, Commissioner Alderks, I don't see you, so if you have a comment, please chime in.
Thank you, Chair. Since you called on me, I'll be on the spot. So I support the lower minimum for parking. Trying to go through, you know, the topics that we've covered. I would like to see greater, like, deeper affordability, especially around the 70%. If we can get that lower. And I recognize that it's, it's a balancing act. And we're also looking, by creating these affordable options, to, to invite people that maybe don't currently live in our community to, to live and work here in Bothell. And so I think it would be really important to kind of understand the equity impact of how we are, how we are attracting people from, you know, various income levels, so that they can, they can live here affordably. But to Commissioner Gustafson's question, sorry, there's children in the background. So can you, can you restate the question, please, Sarah?
Good. Sarah Gustafson here. Chair, is it all right if I jump in?
Yes, please do.
Yes, my question was, basically, are we comfortable closing the discussion to talk about affordable housing at this point, given that there has been other community input that we might want to listen to? And honestly, I think I'm kind of answering my own question right now. It does seem we are comfortable closing the discussion to affordable housing because it is such a priority. I also think that, at this point, our equity infrastructure is not as robust as we would like. So perhaps some of these incentives that Mr. Benford said could be implemented later using FAR, perhaps we could designate those, if, as it were, to be put on the table once we get that better structure to... I don't want us, right now, to be deciding all the incentives, because, as we've said, we are limited in perspective.
And I appreciate that. I also want to point out that we are trying to get to a recommendation. So if we're not able to include everything that the commission would like, then some things will have to be, I think, sent forward as, these are additional things that we'd like the council to consider, that the commission would like the council to consider. Or look at the implementation plan that was discussed at the last meeting, and see if it's in there, because I think some of those things are covered in there as well. So, and I hate to keep pushing the process and the timeline here, but it's important that, that we get there.
Commissioner Alderks here again. I'm going to jump in to respond. I, just today, my husband and I were discussing the need for affordable commercial space for a, you know, kind of off-the-wall idea that maybe we someday would want to pursue together. And so, because that's, and that, you know, that's a conversation that keeps coming up. It was even a conversation in Bothell community, you know, among, you know, the 24,000 of us that are part of that group, and the, the desire for co-working spaces and affordable commercial. So I'm, I'm not ready to say, to prioritize affordable housing over affordable commercial space. I would like to see us move forward with recommendations on both. Yeah. So that's sort of, that's sort of where I'm going. I, I get the desire to do that. I just, I believe that both is, both are really important, especially if we are looking to be a place where people can live and work, and be business owners, and, you know, you know, get ahead, you know, get ahead, and, and, you know, build, build their own wealth and, and equity.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson, I believe you had a desire to make a comment?
Yes, I, thank you. I will make a comment. I think, again, I'm leaning more towards focusing all of our firepower on affordable housing right now, even though I am a, it's painful, because I am a big supporter of affordable commercial space. I think perhaps a reason for this is that affordable commercial space is not as straightforward as affordable housing, I believe. In affordable housing, you determine it based on AMI, but I don't think there is any such thing as an AMI for a business. Do you base it on revenue? Do you base it on that income? I think it would be very, very complicated, and I would really, really like to have that equity analysis, that person in place before we, we start that. And I don't know where this leaves us, because I don't want to leave affordable commercial space behind, but I'm leaning towards just focusing on affordable housing with the higher height and the lower parking, as was stated before. That's where I am at this moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Olson.
I just wanted to echo, I really appreciate Commissioner Alderks' position, and it's a discussion that I've seen in the community many times. But I do want to echo what Commissioner Gustafson said. And we are coming up on needing to make a recommendation and get this over to the council pretty soon. So I think, just for time and for how complicated affordable commercial space seems like it's going to be, I don't know that we can tackle it in full. So that, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleet.
I think Commissioner Olson just summed that up very well. And so I'd like to go ahead and move forward with this, just focusing on affordable housing, and trying to get some of those most in need. So we can go at those numbers that maybe Mike was talking about with the MFTs, with regards to 50 to 60%. Thank you.
So I've heard a strong consensus to move forward on the affordable housing, a reluctance to abandon the affordable commercial space issue, but a concern that it would delay things now, and perhaps it should be something that's kept as an interest. But we have to make a choice. I've heard more interest on locking in on the housing aspect. Is that a fair summary? Again, not abandoning the commercial, affordable, affordable commercial space, but holding on that.
And we're, and we're certainly not abandoning it entirely. I just, I'll just point out that this particular piece, the affordable housing piece of this, has been the most complex aspect of the code. And we've, and we're still grappling with that. So we just needed some clear direction from the commission, which you've given us, and I appreciate that. Thank you. I also appreciate wanting to try to figure out some way to incorporate affordable commercial space in that. We haven't given up on that. I just wanted to let the commission know where we are right now with the affordable housing aspect of this. There's still more work to do on that. And as Bob pointed out, there may still be an opportunity to do something with commercial space. But that will be a complicated piece that we'll have to take a look at. So thank you for the, thank you for the discussion and for the direction. That's very, very much appreciated and helpful.
So with that, I guess we'll move on to your next item.
Okay. And thanks, Dave and Mike, and for all of your work on this. And Bob, I know you've been.
Director Cotterman.
As well. Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, off the screen, so I'm raising my hand before we move on. And Mike, I guess, so this is a point of clarification. You mentioned that even if we're not recommending an action, we could make a recommendation for the city. And so I don't know the terminology, so that's why I'm asking for clarification. How could we then, you know, listening to my other, my fellow Commissioners here, that wanting to focus on affordable housing, how can we make that decision and communicate in some kind of verbiage in the plan that future directions that the city council needs, should, and pursue, is affordable commercial space? Can we add, can we add some verbiage to the plan that goes along with our recommendation?
Short answer to that is yes. The, the other answer, I'm going to call on Rachel, because if I recall correctly, Rachel, when you went over the implementation element or chapter last time, there's already some language in there in the actions regarding affordable commercial space. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, you are. There's a couple of actions, one about including affordable One about including affordable commercial space with redevelopment, so design guidance to go ahead and build out that shell for flexible space, so that it has space for HVAC to support commercial kitchens and things like that, and frequent entries to support a range of business types and configurations for condoization or co-working space. And then there are a handful that relate to partnering and finding nonprofits and partners to work with on affordable commercial space.
Thank you. So I would ask the commissioners then, Commissioner Aldrich in particular, if you would take a look at those in more detail and see if you would propose any changes to that that the commission could approve as part of the recommendation, or if there's something that you want to add to that. But we would need to include that in the draft that we bring back to you at the November 18th meeting.
Thank you, and thank you, Rachel. Can you give me directions where I can find that in the plan? And I will get back to you on that.
Yes. Sorry, my video is so slow. You all can hear me, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, can I follow up with you and send you the, some pinpointed places?
Yes, please. That's perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Rachel, if you could forward that to me, and I'll send it along.
Of course.
We'll need to share that with the full commission.
Sure.
And you'll get my usual "please do not reply" all to this email at the top of it. It's almost like my signature now when I send things out. Okay, back to the next item. So the next one was, this is a request from Roger Blandich that the code allow up to 100-foot building height in the ORH zone, which is that area that we were just talking about where the hotel is, the McDonald's, the Starbucks, between 17th to 20th and the Bothell Everett Highway. We've looked at the code, and I will tell you, there is some ambiguity in the code about what the maximum height is in this area. There are those of us who think it's 65 feet, and there are others who think it's 100 feet. So what we are proposing, however, and what we're recommending, that the commission, if you concur with this, is that we retain the proposed maximum height of 85 feet in the ORH. It, we think it's more than currently allowed, and it also, I think, is probably the practical maximum of what we're going to see in building heights. But before we talk about that, I also want to bring up, we've had another request that has come from the Life Sciences Washington Group, as well as one of the tenants of the park. It's in the employment area low. The current height allowed in that area is 100 feet, with up to 150 feet under unique manufacturing needs. And what we have proposed for the employment medium is 100 feet. The employment low, we dropped to 50 feet. And that was, I think, to create some distinction between the zones and also to reflect the type of building that's there. And the request is that we increase that back to 100 feet to provide greater flexibility for future redevelopment of that area. Staff doesn't have a particular recommendation for you this evening. We just received this. As far as the analysis and what had been assumed, the 100 feet would fit with that if you want to go back to the 100 feet, or if you wanted to, excuse me, make that the 85 feet, for example, that we're applying in other parts of the sub-area, that's another possibility. Bob, is there anything you wanted to add to either of those requests, or Rachel for that matter?
Other than we have a slide that just shows the differences between some of those building heights of your...
Thank you. I almost forgot about that. I even pulled it up earlier, and I forgot to... So this is, go to my slideshow here. There was a request last time from the commission to get some examples of what different building heights look like. So this is something that staff put together. So a 45-foot building, to give you an example, we've got the Bothell City Hall, as well as the 104th Apartments that are on 185th and 104th. So those are at about the 45-foot level. 65-foot, which is the current maximum for residential uses in Canyon Park that have structured parking and some ground floor retail, would be the Six Oaks in downtown on Bothell Way, as well as the 98th Avenue Apartments. These are the new ones that are built just north of the library. And then, excuse me, the last, which, as we talked about before, 100-foot tall buildings are somewhat unusual, just because of the construction type. But these are two examples from Bellevue. This one is a mixed-use retail with apartments above, and the other is, I believe it's almost all apartments, if not all apartments. And this is in the Spring District in the Bell Red area. This other one is downtown. It's actually in the corner of Bellevue Way and Main Street in the Old Town area. So those are some examples, if you're familiar with those. That helps at all.
So the question you asked is whether to stay with the 50-foot or entertain either 85 or 100.
Great. There are two different areas that we're talking about. One is the area between 17th to 20th and Bothell Everett Highway. The request there is to go from what's proposed, which is 85 feet, up to 100 feet. And then in the employment low area, which is most of the area that's in the eastern portion of the Regional Growth Center, the sub-area, the request is to go back to the 100-foot height limit from what's currently proposed, which is 50 feet. So there are two separate requests.
And the recommendation you have here is to retain the 85-foot in the 17th to 20th Bothell Everett section.
Correct. Yes. And for the other one, we haven't really taken a close look at that, so it could go either way. And I think it's really, you know, commission feel about that. Providing additional flexibility, there could be some benefit to that in that area.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I'm in, unless there's some kind of weird consequence I'm not foreseeing, I guess I'm in favor of the 85-foot limit everywhere. That, you know, like the employment low center that was talked about, or I don't know if you're looking for a recommendation of 50 or 100 or 85 is the flat, you know, sense-making limit everywhere, so you have to let me know on that. But I'd rather there be flexibility, just to kind of see what people come up with. Like, it could be, you know, especially since it's the Life Sciences sort of group that's asking for this. So I think we should, especially because we like them being here so much, I think we should go with it. But that's my opinion.
Other commissioners. Some kind of item not adding general consensus with increasing height in that area.
Yeah, your microphone is doing it again.
Oh, no, I didn't, I just stopped. That's not fair.
Commissioner Aldrich here. I think if mic mute, when Chair Kiernan talks, we can hear the chair better. And I realize you're just going to be kind of bouncing back and forth between mute, but let's try that and see if it helps.
Okay, so, thank you. We will try that. So I think, based on what I heard from Commissioner Olson and the chair, and what I saw from some of the other commissioners, did not see you, Commissioner Aldrich, you're invisible again, but generally supportive of retaining the 85 feet in the ORH and going back to 100 feet in the EL, yeah, the employment low area. Is that, okay. That's what we will do. Thank you. So I will move on to the next item. Unless there was, did I miss anything on there, Bob?
I just got a question there.
Sorry.
So is it still low if you increase the height to 100 feet? Or are there other characteristics?
I'll unmute myself first and ask Bob to address that, if there are other distinctions between the EM and the EL zones.
I will have to look at the actual chart, the use chart, the density dimensional chart there to double check. Well, there's different maximum base floor area ratios. So the EM's, the EM zone has a, at least proposed, 1.75 maximum base FAR. And the EL zone has only a 0.6 FAR. So if you increase the maximum height to 100 in the EL, you still would be, unless you change it, subject to that lower max base FAR, upon which you could have incentives to go above that FAR.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, and I think there are a few distinctions in terms of uses, but probably not as many as I recall. One we just made tonight, I believe, which was the, some of the use changes that we made. Okay, now let me try, go back again to... How many screens open? So this next one has to do with the minimum FAR applicability. And these, this is a recommendation again, and one of the speakers earlier this evening referred to this. This was an attempt to address the concerns without having to go with the vesting issue, but that's still on the table, and I'll get to that a little bit later. So this is really talking about some language that was in the proposal last year that the commission recommended to the council regarding minimum FAR. This was a comp plan and code amendment that came to you. And this is language that Mr. Blackburn had prepared. So really, it was looking at if you have an existing structure that does not currently meet the minimum, that would not meet the minimum FAR requirement, that creates a non-conformity, basically. And we have non-conformities all over the city, and that's pretty typical. So if they propose to increase the building size, they would not be required to meet the minimum FAR because they're just increasing the size of an existing building. So they're not increasing the non-conformity, which is something that we want to avoid. The next one was going a little further, and to expand that, to apply to the Juno situation, and there will be others like this in the future as well, that are proposing a new building on an existing developed site. So rather than just adding on to a building, they're adding a building. And in that situation, we also want to make sure that they're increasing the FAR, they're getting closer to that minimum, but not requiring them to meet the minimum, either for that building or for the overall FAR of the site. As long as they're not doing any, and if they're replacing a building, as long as they're not decreasing the FAR of the site, then that would be exempt from meeting the minimum requirement. It would not apply if they are redeveloping the site, the entire site. So if they, if they have a building, a building on the site, they're knocking it down, they're rebuilding. In that case, they would have to meet the minimum FAR requirement. Likewise, if they have a vacant site and they're building, they would have to meet the minimum FAR requirement. Because in that, those cases, it would be creating a non-conformity that didn't exist before. So I know that sounds a little planner-y, but I hope that makes some sense. And then the third one is really addressing, let's see, it continues on to the next page. This is really addressing the situation with Sound Transit, and we've talked before about using transfer of development rights. So this is putting something in place that is acknowledging that that's a way that they can meet the FAR. It's not exempting them from that requirement. It is simply providing an alternative means for an essential public facility. So it's not specific to Sound Transit, but it would apply to the Sound Transit bus space. So if we had other essential public facilities that were proposed in the park, this would be available to them as well. And they would be required in those cases then to use the TDR program in order to meet their minimum FAR. And it's just the difference between what they're proposing and what the minimum would be. So it would not preclude expansion in the future. So that's probably more explanation, and I'll just quickly go to the next one. This is a placeholder who will develop the TDR program. Hopefully, next year, in cooperation with Sound Transit, we're in discussions about that. So this is really putting a placeholder in the document for that language once that's developed. So those two kind of go together. So with that, I will stop explaining.
Thanks. I was just going to say that I agree with the recommendations, and I think that they do a good job of hearing and understanding Juno therapeutics concerns. And I like how it's been dealt with, so thank you.
You're muted, Commissioner.
Commissioner Gustafson here. Again, I'm looking at the language for Juno. Is this all they have asked for is to be, is to have that one in place? Or are we also going to consider more before I start talking?
This is just one of the issues that they raised.
Okay.
Their basic request was to provide what they're calling either a vesting runway or a safe harbor. And I do have that on the list a little bit later on to talk about.
Okay, thank you. So I didn't want to, it seems like the FAR would be at the level that it was before, which is not meeting the current Canyon Park standards. So it seems that if we just extended that a business could change small things on its property over and over and over and over again over 50 years and never have to meet that increased FAR requirements. Is this a concern? Am I thinking about it the wrong way?
No, that's a great question. And there is language, and I didn't put the language in here, but there is language regarding the number of, you have, you can only do so much within so many years. So there are limitations on that to prevent the situation you're talking about.
Okay, yes, thank you. The timeline would be great. And then, again, I feel like I have a broken record on it, but I feel with Sound Transit and the essential facilities, allowing them to do TDR does not make up for the issues that are brought up. There was another issue brought up in the city council meeting last night about the lost tax revenues that happened from the bus barn. And again, we want Sound Transit. We want that transit. I haven't been convinced that TDR is enough to make the city, at least in some part, whole. So putting that out there. Thank you.
And I would just add, keep in mind that when we talk about these and we address these, we may be responding to a specific request or a specific issue, but we apply them in a way that is more general. So, you know, this is not just about Sound Transit, nor is it just about Juno therapeutics. So I just want to keep that in mind. So, and the purpose of this is not to exact things from Sound Transit. If there are exactions that should apply across the board, then those are things that, you know, that we'd be looking for direction from. But I appreciate what you're saying, and that's certainly something that the city has been in discussions with Sound Transit about for many months now. Okay, so the next item. Okay, so the next item, uh, this is one that I believe we touched on last time. Uh, this was about the streetscape along 527, SR 527, Bothell Everett Highway. And the proposal, the direction that we received from the commission last time, uh, and we're just confirming that it's an eight-foot planting strip and an eight-foot sidewalk that would be done in conjunction with redevelopment. So the graphics in the regulation, the graphic in the regulations will be updated to reflect that standard. Uh, and that's really just to let you know about that. Certainly if there's any concerns or questions about that, let me know. But otherwise, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on with that one because I think we covered it before. The next one is something we talked about last time with the planning commission and we've come back with some proposed language. Uh, this is one frankly that was a challenge to try to draft because we want to provide flexibility, which is what we heard from the commission. But we also want to make sure that we provide some direction to the, the community development director, who has that discretion, um, whether that's me or someone else in the future. Then that there's enough direction there to know what the limitations on that would be. Or at the very least, which is what this is trying to get at, what is it that we're trying to accomplish with that? What's the, what's the general intent? So that's addressed and however that flexibility is applied. So this is really addressing, and again, this is not just about Sound Transit. This would apply to other properties as well because we anticipate that this issue will come up with other large, uh, building footprints or the type of use that may have some security issues uh, because of the nature of the work that they do. So they would have restricted access to the property and, and it might be fenced or, um, you know, limited in terms of that access. So we wanted to try to anticipate that and allow for an alternative design of the through-block connections, provided it maximizes the connectivity on and around the site and also maximizes opportunities for connectivity and contribution to an overall network. And I know last time the commission talked about some things like, I think Commissioner Kerr brought up east-west connections. Um, we, we were concerned that was getting maybe a little too specific and it wouldn't necessarily apply in all instances. So we were trying to identify what the outcome here would be that we're trying to achieve. So I will stop sharing and stop explaining. And...
I, I see Commissioner Kerr also see the clock. Uh, we have four more minutes on my computer. So I would entertain a motion to extend somewhat to allow Commissioner Kerr to fully express herself. Thank, thank.
I would ask for a 30-minute extension, uh, Mr. Chair, because I think we've got a little bit more to cover tonight. We'll, we'll get through it as fast as we can, but I'd really like to get through this this evening.
Okay, so do I have a motion to extend the meeting for 30 minutes? I'll assume this is the motion, Commissioner Kerr, then we'll just speak later.
Thank you. This is the motion. Uh, I'm, I move to extend the meeting till 9:30.
I see Commissioner Olson and Ray's ring.
I second the motion.
So it's been moved and seconded that we extend the meeting till 9:30. Uh, to see both commissioners, Commissioner Aldrich, again, you're invisible, so. Good show of hands for everyone, and Commissioner Aldrich are gonna chime in then.
Yay.
Yay.
Okay, so we will continue the meeting till 9:30. And with that, Commissioner Kerr, uh, you want to speak before the meeting is moved?
Uh, thanks. My, um, my flag was for the meeting time, but I guess I'll respond to this too. The, uh, recommendation is, uh, it gets at the heart of what I was getting at last time, uh, which was allowing flexibility for the director to make the decision. And so I am in agreement with the recommendation.
Commissioner Aldrich here. Can I have permission?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I agree with Commissioner Kerr. I'm wondering, would it be appropriate to add here, in addition to like maximizing connectivity and, and pedestrian space or, um, like walkways? Could we also add green space to that? That the through-block connection could, like, yes, in addition to pedestrian and, and, um, connections, create, you know, a breakup of building concrete and add some oxygen producers throughout there?
So I, I will respond to that as soon as I turn the lights back on. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Yes, we've gone dark. We're back.
Sometimes I can intimidate from afar. The, uh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get back to your question. Oh, green space. So the, the, the actual regulations for what the through-block connections do and how they're designed, I think would address what you're talking about. The purpose of these is to provide that, that pedestrian, sometimes vehicular, connection. So I think we've already covered it. Bob, do you want to add a little bit to that? Because you're more familiar with the design requirements of those through-block connections.
Well, if you're providing the through-block connections right there, you're providing for, um, I mean, I guess some of the designs for them may not necessarily be completely green, but for the most part, they're a breakup of the buildings and provide, uh, you know, ground level open space. Although some of them might, you know, if you have a wooner, it might be more concrete or asphalt than, than, uh, any landscaping. But it will be a separation of buildings. But if you're, this provision allows for flexibility. Let's say you have a large site and you have, it has two through-block connections to it. There's probably an, an opportunity to maybe they only do one, but they do it in a really, in a, in a good spot that allows the director to kind of make the connection that it, that it does make these good connections in critical spots. So I guess that's in the way it gets to having some green space. But I don't know if that's completely answering your question.
I think the other way that this, this is, um, Mike Cotterman again. I think the other way that this would be applied, speaking as the director, I'd look at the context for that, as Bob was talking about. What's the function of that through-block connection? Is it, uh, is it to provide vehicular connection? Or is it really more of a, of a pedestrian, um, what is it, go white, walk, bike and roll, um, type of, of a use? In which case, it doesn't necessarily have the same width and there's more opportunity to create that greenery that goes with that. So I think that's, that's how we would look at those as those proposals come through, if, if that helps.
Uh, Commissioner Aldrich here. I, I think it does, um, since you're saying that, that this, this particular, um, exception is on top of the other guidance that's already given. I just am concerned that if we are, well, no, I see what you're saying. I've got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So did I see nods from others? This is... Okay, so moving on to the next one then. And this next one is about off-street parking. So here's, this is one again, we're looking for feedback. And actually, I think we covered this. This is the one that Dave presented earlier. So, uh, Dave, if we, did we miss something or can we move on to the next one? Dave still misses.
I think we did cover, uh, the requirements for non-up.
I heard a yes from Dave, so we'll move on to the next one. Thank you. All right, so special setbacks. This is one that came up as we were looking at, um, some of the changes that were made in the, in the park that's within the regional growth center. And where, there are very few areas, but there are a couple where we could have, uh, a more intense use next to a residential that's outside of these zones. So this is language basically to address that. And it's, and it closely matches what we already have in the code for other areas. Uh, we just changed the setback a little bit and also changed the angle, um, of the building height. So the recommendation there, again, is pretty consistent with how we treat this in other areas. So I'm going to... Next one doesn't really relate to that. So I will stop for a second and just see if there's any... You don't have to weigh in unless you have a particular question or concern.
I see Commissioner Kerr, he's willing to weigh in.
Thank you. This is Carsten. I wouldn't normally weigh in on something this inane, but I know that it has, um, special peppy with some of the members on to the council. So, um, just thought I'd go through this. In the case where there are topographic issues, where maybe the single-family zoning, um, is uphill of these, um, larger structures, um, that would be proposed down below. I'm thinking particularly in the, um, in the section of the, um, the easternmost section of the business park and then up on top of the, um, kind of the plateau there, there's a, there's a, um, boundary between single-family and, um, the Canyon Park sub-area. Does, does that have anything to do, like, that if there, you could have like a hundred, 100-foot tall building down below and it still wouldn't be in the sun envelope or whatever there, whatever you're getting at with the 45-degree, um, kind of window, um, such that that topo, the topography isn't really, it might negate some of the concerns? Is there, um, do you have concerns in the, in the code about this? Or is that just pretty, uh, non, non-important?
Well, I wouldn't say it's not important. I think that it has come up in the past, uh, and I think this addresses it. But we're gonna have to take, I'm gonna have to take a closer look. I, I, I know when we looked at it, it, it didn't apply in very many places. And I'm not even sure that it fits into the area that you're talking about on the eastern edge. I think that other standards may kick in in that case. But we'll go back and take another look at that and see if that, if that issue's addressed.
Thanks.
Other questions coming in? Do you think there's some deep topography on the east side that comes into play?
There's definitely some, some topo issues on the east side of this, but I'm just not sure if this applies or if there are regulations on the other side of that line that might apply in that case. So that's what we've got to take a little closer look at. I think this might be within the park itself, um, where we were changing the zones and there wasn't anything in the new zones that addressed it. I believe that's the situation we're talking about. And that was very limited, as I recall. Um, but we will def- definitely take a look at that. So the next one, uh, this is about a fee in lieu for the, uh, public outdoor space. And just to let you know, at this point, we're still working on that. But the, the mechanism that we'll be using and the approach that we'll be using will really closely match what we're doing for the downtown, which you're very familiar with. I know we went through that. So it's really more for information at this point. On the vesting, this is getting back to the request again. This came from Geno therapeutics, but it would apply to more than Geno therapeutics. And that's why we're having to spend some extra time. And I don't have a particular recommendation for you this evening. As I mentioned earlier, that we were looking at, uh, ways to address some of these concerns through specific language in the code that would address those specific issues, um, that had been raised. That does not, that does not, um, seem to work, uh, from what, uh, Juno is telling us. You know, they're really looking for that vesting runway. So that's the other thing that we're, we're still looking at. The, so the overall issues that they have had to do with, uh, the minimum FAR, which I think we, we have addressed, as the speaker said. The, um, some of the other requirements that would go along with the new code, such as the one for affordable housing for commercial space, uh, the, the fee in lieu that could be paid there. Uh, there were also talks about maximum parking, which we're not proposing at this time. That's one of the, uh, uh, action items that's in the implementation program is to look at that and, and implement that in the future. Uh, another had to do with some of the other things that we talked about in terms of incentives, like solar arrays. So, uh, I think, you know, there, and, and Commissioner Fleet gave a thumbs up on that one. I knew that was important to him. So those were some of the other concerns that they raised. So from that standpoint, they're looking at a, at a much more broader concern about how the new regulations would apply because they've already done their design work based on the existing regulations. And this would cause them to, you know, potentially redesign or re, uh, revisit whether to do the project. So we're still working on some vesting language there and we'll work on bringing that back to the commission. And I think that's the direction we had from you last time was to, to look at that. Uh, the next one has to do with essential public facilities. And these are some things that, again, uh, suggestions from Sound Transit, as well as a staff recommendation on this one. And again, it's, this time, we're talking about Sound Transit, but it really would apply to any essential public facilities in the future. And that would include things like fire stations, um, water treatment, other utilities, those types of things. So the first one is the minimum FAR and TDR. Uh, this was some language that was proposed by Sound Transit to provide greater level of certainty, uh, specifically for the bus space. The, the bus base project will have to go through the, the conditional use permit process, which goes to the hearing examiner. There are conditions that the hearing examiner could put on the bus base. When staff looked at this language that was proposed by Sound Transit, it really reads more like a condition than something that would go into the code. So this relates back to the other language that I talked about earlier, for essential public facilities and the minimum FAR. So we're not recommending this language, um, at this time. The second one had to do with the through-block connections. And this one, we already talked about, so I think we're, we're good on that one. Uh, the third, we're looking for some feedback. This has to do with the outdoor space and the requirement. Currently, there is an allowance in the code, the proposed code, to allow for a fee in lieu for up to 50% for, uh, certain uses that are under, uh, a, a certain size. Their proposal would be to apply this to essential public facilities that are over a certain size. So we're looking for some feedback, um, from the commission on that, as well as the next one, which has to do with the cross-section on 20th, uh, that currently relates to that, um, 40-foot, um, landscape swale.
Do you want to share those sort of commissioners now comfortable with the discussion, Commissioner? No, no, you are not there.
You're on mute, Michael. Michael, you're on mute.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out, that's probably only the first time I've done that tonight, which is pretty good for me that I made it this far. Normally I do it every time. So the minimum FAR, uh, I was saying, their language really is more of a condition. Uh, we would go with our recommended language on that. The through-block connections, we've talked about. The open space fee in lieu, um, is something we're looking for some feedback on. And that's, would be specific to essential public facilities, that they can do a fee in lieu for up to 50%. Uh, then somewhat related to that is the, what we talked about last time with the, the cross-section for this, the 20th Avenue. And I should also note that I think we're still looking at that cross-section to see if, if, um, we want to stick with that 40-foot recommendation. That's the only place where we have that right now is along the, the east side of that street. So I will stop sharing and see if there's any feedback from commissioners on either of those last two items. In terms of what's being proposed.
So looking for any interest in comments or questions? Commissioner Kerr, you look like you want to say something.
Thanks, this is Carsten. I was just gonna say something if no one else was. But, um, the open space, uh, fee in lieu. I'm concerned that facilities that are large, that would require a large amount of open space, giving up that open space is going to leave gaps in open space. So I'm not really a fan of, and this is separate from Sound Transit. This is not... So I'm not really a fan of, and this is separate from Sound Transit, this is not directed at them at all. It's just a mathematical issue of allowing larger projects in general to get out of open space requirements, especially given our history on this commission of not really loving fee in lieu because there's no real direct program to which those would be applied, although I'd assume maybe plazas and other community things might be involved. Anyway, that's my two cents on that, and I see that there are other hands, so I'll defer my time.
And just very quick, if I could respond very quickly. So two things on that. One is this would only apply to essential public facilities, not just not large uses in general. So other large uses would still have to comply with the full amount. And then the other piece that I would mention is the so the fees in this case, if any any fees are collected for this or some other use that is allowed to do that, those would be applied within that subarea, and they would be used to enhance or expand those other areas that have already been identified as public spaces. And there are a few of those as well.
So Commissioner Fleet.
Commissioner Fleet here. Thank you, Director Cotterman, for clarifying that, but I would like to kind of second or agree with what Commissioner Kur just said with regards to even though these are this is specifying essential public facilities, it's tough when you lose a bigger area like that, because that is you are losing, I think, a good opportunity for a good open space.
Other commissioners and Commissioner Alderks, you're invisible. Commissioner Olson, I see.
Thank you, Chair. I'm glad you're no longer in the robot voice mode, too. So I I wanted to ask Director, is there an option to add some language that says, maybe at the director's discretion, if if the essential public utility can't find a way to do the open space, then the director could approve a fee in lieu with the hope that you and hopefully it's you, but any director would sort of push them to get creative before we go towards the fee in lieu. I'm I'm open to it in very limited circumstances, but I do share the concerns that we don't really like that as a commission.
Understood, and that is certainly one option, yes, to provide that that discretion. That's pretty much what we had in the downtown up until, well, we still have it, but that changes in the code amendment that's going to council that the planning commission had recommended, we limit the percentage. So that could be a piece of this as well. Yes, thank you for that suggestion.
And and I'll chime in, 50% seems like an awful big exception. What was it before, five? Going from five to 50, that seems quite the leap.
Commissioner Alderks here. I would agree with that. Is it could it be more appropriate to do the in lieu for, you know, not exceeding 30%?
Certainly, we can put any, you know, any limit on that. We'll look at a at a lower number and see what what we think makes sense there. I'm hearing that direction from the commission, so we'll certainly explore that.
Commissioner Kur.
One further item, just to get it in before we move on, but I would be remiss if I didn't echo Chair Kirin's continual concern on fee in lieu because of maintenance. And so I know we have new commissioners here since we've kind of discussed fee in lieu before, but when we devote or when we allow development to use fee in lieu, we lose out on that maintenance of public open space. And so that would be a concern to think about, too. So even reduced amounts, we're still losing out in the long term when you take it out 100 years from now. So I wanted to touch on the last item in this section, which was the 20th Avenue cross-section. And I was wondering why the 40-foot swale was included initially on the east side of the road there? Was it for stormwater purposes? Was it just for buffer from traffic? I was wondering if I could get a little bit more information on on the why.
And that's one of the things that I want to take a closer look at because I I wasn't part of that discussion when that was put into the plan. My understanding is it had more to do with stormwater. I think that this was an opportunity along that particular stretch to provide some additional stormwater storage and treatment. And I don't know, Rachel, if you were part of that discussion, if you can add anything to that.
Yeah, and could I just get a clarification? Which stretch are we talking about? Is it 220th or 20th?
20th, north of 220th. Yeah, so it's basically along the Romack site and then around the curve, the Sound Transit site, and I think it even extends all the way out to Boffel Everett Highway. You and I talked about that.
That's right. Yeah, the thinking behind that was that there is already a 40-foot swale or so in front of Romack and as well on the north side of 220th. So 220th and 20th were shown with very large swales and big setbacks for really a very landscaped green environment that already exists, and Partite identified those areas as, as Mike mentioned, good for natural drainage and improvements in enhancing those conditions there.
So it may be that we could look at something that reduces that since it doesn't exist on the Sound Transit site, there may be a way to reduce that and retain that stormwater function, since that was the the original intent of that. The other thing I wanted to mention, just getting back to your other point, Commissioner Kur, about maintenance, I think it's a it's a very good point and a valid point. Not all of these will be publicly owned, so maintenance in in many cases will be the responsibility of the property owner.
And just picking up on Carsten's, Commissioner Kur's comments on my previous comments, my concern was by going fee in lieu, you then have the public sector taking that money, developing public space, and taking that long-term maintenance obligation as opposed to when it's an open space controlled by a private entity. They will do the maintenance.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this item?
Thought I saw Commissioner Olson's hand up.
Commissioner Olson.
I was I was wavering on whether to ask. It's a little out there, but when we talk about fee in lieu, is there a mechanism by which the city could sort of determine a typical maintenance cost for public open space that's built because of fee in lieu? And then, you know, collect, let's say, every 10 years, they collect a certain percentage of that fee in lieu for maintenance, like to kind of build that into this so it's a little less onerous on the city? Again, this is kind of out there. I don't know if that makes any sense.
It makes a lot of sense. The the calculations have proven to be more challenging than we expected because there are a lot of different ways to calculate what those costs actually are. So if we could pin that down, there may be some mechanisms. It wouldn't be a fee in lieu. It would be just some sort of a almost like a homeowners association dues structure or, you know, business improvement type of thing. So I don't know that we'd be able to apply those. Frankly, I'm not sure that we'd have the ability to do that, and it may not be the best route to go.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have one last item.
Okay.
And that is, there was another comment that was brought up by the Business Park Owners' Association about conflicts between their covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and and what that would mean in terms of, for example, they prohibit residential uses in certain areas, they prohibit on-street parking, they have their own signage restrictions. There are conflicts that exist today between those CCNRs and the city code, and we have to deal with those on a case-by-case basis. When those conflicts arise, the CCNRs govern. That's, you know, that's that's how that works. So the the purpose of having these in place, even though the CCNRs may not match up with what we're proposing, is if at some point those CCNRs go away, and those do go away at, you know, from time to time, there've already been some changes in the business park, then we already have the regulations in place that will address what it is we're trying to achieve in those areas. So that's that's how that is intended to work. We recognize there are conflicts. There there have been, and there will continue to be those conflicts. We've dealt with them so far. We'll deal with them as we go forward with this as well. So nothing changed there. That was really just for the commission's information because I knew that had come up. So at this point, Bob, did you have some additional things that you wanted to touch on in the code that we did not do so far in the in the matrix? And if so, how long do you think that's going to take? We may need another extension.
I think you've covered everything. The slides that I had were largely just showing the actual code document of what you illustrated. The only other thing that I had was I did have some extra slides that just explained how FAR works and looked at some of the models that we did, but I've already presented that to you two meetings ago, I believe, so I don't think that's critical, and and they already have it. Everything else is in your draft, and you covered, Michael, so I think we're probably good.
And I'm just thumbing through. I know there are several other areas in the code in the packet. You've got the latest version of the draft. Obviously, there's still some things we're working on. And then Bob highlighted some areas where we either made changes, some of those we talked about tonight, or maybe a few others. And then he also noted where some graphics will be updated to reflect changes and and other clarifications and cleanup work that we're doing. So all in all, I think we're in pretty good shape, but there are obviously still some areas that we need to work on. And our our schedule at this point is to not bring this back to you until November 18th. At that time, our plan is to bring you the draft code, the draft plan, and the draft planned action ordinance altogether as a complete final draft package that you can recommend to the city council. Now, obviously, there are some other changes that will be happening in the code as a result of the discussion we've had tonight and the things we've identified that we're still working on. So our that's our goal. Certainly get to the packet ahead of time. Having said that, we did get a request from the Business Park Owners' Association from Karen Martinez, who provided some testimony and a letter previously for the the public hearing at the last meeting, requesting that noting that there was really not a lot of time to review changes that are still happening to the code. And, you know, we recognize that, and we want to make sure that we provide that opportunity. So the suggestion, I think, was, well, I don't know if it was a suggestion, but I think what the chair and I had talked about was if the commission would like to hold another public hearing, then we could do that on the 15th, once we have the final package together. There's really not a point in holding another public hearing until we have that. There will be another public hearing at the city council in any case, but if the commission would like to have another public hearing and allow for comment on the additional work that still has to be done, it'd be it would be on everything. It would be on the plan, the code, and the planned action ordinance. We would just open the the public hearing to all of that, but the main focus certainly would be on the the new stuff that we're working on for the code. So did I say that right, Mr. Chair? Is there something that you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I was just, we did see a letter. Bad indifferent? Okay. Plug and unplug, usual. So as Director Cotterman did indicate, we received a a letter October 12th. We also received an email on October 20th. Those communications reiterated a number of things the Canyon Park Business Owners' Association have stated previously, but the also raised the issue that the development regulations were not final, and they didn't get the opportunity to comment on that. So given that concern, Director Cotterman and I did think it was reasonable to hold an additional public hearing focusing on those regulations, giving them the opportunity to comment and moving forward from there. So I do look to the other commissioners to concur with that additional public hearing. I saw nodding heads and thumbs up.
Commissioner Alderks here. I concur.
Yes. Okay, so I think we have general concurrence with coming back. Commissioner Fleet.
I move to extend the meeting to 9:40.
Okay. I think I almost saw a sigh from a commissioner I won't name, but Commissioner Kur.
I second the motion on the table.
All right, all in favor of a brief extension? Okay, we'll we'll try and wrap it up within the remaining 10. So we're extended till then. Again, feedback on an additional public hearing focusing on the development regulations, but it will be open for other issues that may be brought. See thumbs up, a nodding head, two thumbs up. I don't see any objections, so we will have the staff move forward with the necessary process to have another public hearing, and we'll look to wrap it up at that point. So thank you. Anything else on this agenda item? Okay, recognizing we'll see it again in a couple of weeks. Move on to the next item. Is there any old business for us to discuss?
I have no old business, Mr. Chair.
Okay, reports from staff?
Just one, very briefly, want to talk about the schedule. So for the November 4th meeting, we will have our consultants from OTAC talking about the duplexes on corner lot code amendment, as well as short-plate code amendments that are being worked on. We are hoping to get the critical areas, introduce that topic to the commission as well, and the work that's been done by the consultants on that. We've got a little bit of a scheduling challenge with one of the consultants, but we'll we'll see what we can do on that one. If there are any other issues that come up as we work through the rest of the code or the plan, we'll bring those to you as well, but at this point, we don't plan on bringing anything else on Canyon Park on the 4th, and we will be devoting more of the 18th to your recommendation. So that doesn't have to take a large part of the meeting. We may have some other items on the agenda as well for that. But then this will go to the council. We're currently scheduled to go to council on December 1st for a study session, and December 15th would be a public hearing and adoption of the plan, the code, and the planned action ordinance. So very excited that we've come this far. It's been a lot of good work and and good input, so we will continue to resolve the outstanding issues that we have. And like I said, we know we've got some more work to do on those, and staff and our consultant team is is working diligently to get those done. So thank you, thank you all very much for the discussion and the guidance and feedback this evening.
Commissioner Fleet, have a comment?
Yes, Director Cotterman, just to clarify, so November 18th was when you were hoping for a recommendation, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alderks, if I if I could.
Yes, Commissioner Alderks.
Thank you. Director Cotterman, I just want to say thank you for all the work and effort and thought that you've put into these amendments and especially the the way you've carefully worded things. So thank you for presenting all of this and and for the work that you are continuing to do on it.
I appreciate that, thank you. And I was a little more of the face and the voice tonight, but believe me, there's a lot more work that's been done by all the other people that were on the call this evening and others as well. But thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you to all of them, too.
So I did see a number of thumbs up, some silent clapping. I'd like to echo thanks to Director Cotterman, the staff, the consultants involved in this. It's a very complex project that'll have impacts to the city for years and years to come, a lot of competing interests, and I think you've done an excellent job trying to balance those, so thank you. So reports from members, any members have any items they'd like to bring to the of the commission? the commission? Commissioner Kur.
I'll make this really brief. This is Carson. There's an upcoming event on Tuesday, October 27th, from the Housing Development Consortium. It's about affordable housing and kind of an introductory kind of overview for jurisdictions and housing affordability advocates and for developers. And it's put on by Housing Consortium, which is an, kind of amalgamation of a whole bunch of different groups that are working, especially in King County, towards affordable housing. And I myself am going to go and I would encourage other people to, to participate. It's a Zoom call and you can register on housingconsortium.org's
Commissioner Olson.
Just for quorum tracking, I will be at that as well.
Okay. If others, after consideration, do intend to participate in that, Director Cotterman, should they let you know? Should we? Yeah. So please tell the director if others are planning to attend. I'll take a look at that myself and we'll.
Commissioner Alderks here. Sorry to interrupt.
Yes, go right ahead.
Is that information that Director Cotterman could send us an email and then we could reply to him and not to all of who is going to be in attendance?
Yes, I can certainly do that. I'll follow up with Commissioner Kur. I'm not sure if I have that information. I probably received it, but I've received a lot of emails lately and I don't know if I recall that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other reports from members? Hearing none. I'd like to thank you all for your attention. This is the longest meeting I recall. So, but I think we got through a lot in spite of technical challenges. So hearing no other feedback from members, is that a wave or a request to speak, Commissioner Olson?
Motion.
So we have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Olson. Is there a second? I saw Commissioner Kur first, so Commissioner Kur.
I second the motion to adjourn.
All in favor? I'm going to assume you're not opposed. Okay. So unanimous, by unanimous consent, we adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you all. Good night.